Mr. Hunt, good evening. All right, we have a quorum assembled. So let us begin. First, let me say my name is Walter Byer and I'm chairman of the planning board. And welcome to our Norfolk Planning Board meeting of March ninth, 2021. Three of our members are with us this evening, Mr. Searle. Mr. Searle here?
Yes, I am here.
And myself and Mr. Hunt. Mr. Hunt?
Raise his hand.
Okay, very good.
I could, I couldn't unmute myself, but I'm here now.
Very good, okay. And also with us this evening, the town planner, Rich McCarthy.
Here.
And our administrative assistant, without which we would not get much done, Betsy Fijol. So, good evening. This open meeting of the planning board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we've been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted on the town website and with the agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not necessarily ensure public participation, but this meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the planning board is convening via the Zoom application as posted on the town website, identifying how the public may join. Please note that the meeting is being recorded and some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and that take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. One last comment here in terms of notes. Each vote taken this meeting during this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. And let me say that in my eight years of participation on this board, that's close to 100 meetings. This is the first time we have been unable to assemble a quorum at the stated time of the meeting. And so let me apologize to the public for that. Just one of those things that happened and here we are and we'll get started now. All right, looking at the agenda, the first item on the agenda is a comment about Toils End Farm Fox Run subdivision drain line review with Pulte Holmes. Rich, why don't you take us through that?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, there was identified drainage leaks within the stormwater system for Fox Run located within the town Norfolk. Through the work with Pulte Holmes and DPW and Beta Engineering, they conducted, they televised some of the drainage lines, identified areas which there was leaks detected. And they had proposed three different methods of correcting the leaks, which was a chemical packer, an institute lining, and then replacement of pipes. They went through that process. They videoed the lines and the lines were reviewed by Beta Engineering on behalf of the planning board. And I'm going to screen share now, which I think will help guide the discussion with, make sure I get the right, just thinking about it. So, so can everybody see my screen?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, so this graphic represents the drainage lines within Fox Run, Fox Run within the town Norfolk, identifies the different colorations where there was cracks in the pipe, intrusions, and so where we've landed tonight is that with TV in the lines, there were some areas that have been identified where there still are cracks. And so the discussion tonight is how to bring this to a close as far as completely remediating the cracks within the stormwater line and then validate that that has been successful and then work towards Pulte Holmes petition, the town to have the roads become public ways in the town of Norfolk. They already are public ways within the, in the town of Rentham, but that's not the case yet as related to the town of Norfolk. So I think, I don't know, we have this inspection graphic, but maybe the, I can switch to, I think visually, this is an inspection report that was prepared by Beta Engineering. So we do have Phil Paris with us tonight from Beta Engineering that was doing the review on behalf of the town Norfolk. And we do have on with us as well, our assistant DPW director for the town of Norfolk, who also was involved with evaluation and proposed methodology for repairing it. There was a letter that was sent to the planning board via myself, which, let me get to it so I can bear with me a moment. So this letter was written on February 5th. I shared that with the planning board, chairman, vice chairman. And what you have before you that we want to discuss was a letter that was drafted for the planning board to discuss tonight. It will kind of account a proposal to bring this thing to a close. And I, there are representatives, I know John Indall is with us tonight, as well as, I think, counsel from Pulte Holmes, I believe is with us as well, to kind of talk through where we are right at the moment and where we go from here. I think that kind of.
Well, Rich, there's one more letter, the letter dated 20, February 25th.
The planning board letter.
Which the planning board issued, right, under my signature.
Yep, so, let's see.
Next one down, right there.
Yeah, a little crooked. Apologize for the crookedness, but this is the letter.
Right.
So this letter, you know, starts off by kind of again summarizing where we, where we were, where we are now, and lays out a series of recommendations to move the, move this forward to a closure. And I know that, you know, there probably, I'm sure will need to be some further clarification. These are more bolded points, larger scale, not fine tuned to the detail, but tonight is to kind of go through each one of these and talk through them and have Pulte be able to respond their thoughts and go from there. John, do you, are you on? Are you there?
Yes, yes, I am. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, please, let's hear from you, John.
Well, this, this is a continuation of some discussion that we've had leading up to the, hopefully the successful resolution, so to make the town feel comfortable that the system is appropriate. We just have some clarifications that we'd like to try to discuss. So that's where we are.
Okay, the letter that we sent on the 25th of February, is that, is that clear? Is that acceptable to you? Are you going to follow our recommendations?
Well, what we'd like to discuss is some of the areas that the town has recommended. This situ form lining are areas that are satisfactory and for the most part have always been. This is the, actually the third video of the line. The, the previous video prior to the, to the 2019 video was done in 2017, I believe, where a lot of these issues were identified. And from that, we're working with the town to try to come up with a successful resolution to the issues. We did one round of that and one of the methods, one of methods did not seem to look. So, that is, that is the section down Farrington, which a lot of that chemical packer was either unsuccessful or failed, if you will.
Yep.
So, in the letter, it's our understanding that you as town would like to line everything with this in situ form lining.
With two exceptions.
With two exceptions, correct. One, one exception is the area that has been done already within situ form, which is down closer to Maple Avenue. And a section that was moved and replaced with new new lines.
Right.
So we're, we're asking for clarification on really the areas further down at the end of Hemingway Place where it meets the rental line. There are a number of manholes going around that corner, starting at 45 going up to 47. Those are 24-inch drain lines. And as Beta pointed out in their report, there are, that is satisfactory. There are no issues within that stretch of line. And I'd also like to say previously in the 2017 video, those areas also were identified as having no issues. So those, those, that particular area was, was not looked at initially. So we're, we're asking the question as to why they lining today, they are satisfactory today. And there are a couple of other small areas that are in the same situation. Drain hole 6, 7, and those few lines that are in the section of Farrington and Warren.
Okay, yep.
So that's, I mean, that's one of the questions that we, we'd like to discuss. We, just, just for the record, so the words are said, anything that is shown on this graph in yellow that does have differences, we have zero issue doing that work, starting as soon as I can get in situ form. I have not spoken to them in about two weeks. My previous conversations with them were because of the time of year, they were not extremely busy and get out fairly quickly. I'm assuming that's still the case. So I don't know the exact timeframe until I talk to them, but in theory, if I made that phone call tomorrow morning, I'm guessing that probably at some point next week would be able to mobilize.
Okay.
So again, we, we have zero issue, although I agree 100%, all of those defects are worse or new. I think we're, I don't think it's worth arguing the nusheer on that section at all. So I don't think there's any topic of discussion other than we'll line those areas with no questions asked.
All right, on the, on the areas that you're, you're raising an issue with, here's what I recommend at this point. I know you want to start this work as quickly as possible, get it behind you, as do we. But why don't you put the, put your issues in a new letter to, to us and we will turn around and answer to you within, within a week. Once we receive that letter.
And then, and then the other question is, is the bonding?
Yep.
It's, it's my understanding that the bonds are in place now really don't do what you need them to do. And I think we had that discussion at the last planning board meeting. So we're, we're, your, your responsler said that the bond would be reduced. So we're curious what that reduction may be.
Well, let's go back to two years to maybe even three at this point. I'm not sure exactly when, but we had a meeting in town hall with yourself and a couple of other gentlemen from Pulte. And when we walked out of that meeting, we had an agreement that these two bonds that we hold would be canceled and replaced with another bond. That never happened. So we're, we're sitting on two bonds and you're right that they're slightly off target for what we need to have done. Nevertheless, as a measure of good faith, if you in fact go ahead and line the pipes as, as we've recommended and requested, then we would consider reducing the, the amount of the bond and giving you some relief. The remainder of the bond would not be released until we TV the, the lines again and make sure everything is hunky dory before we finally wrap it up, release the bond and then place the, the streets on the town meeting for road acceptance.
Yes, that, that is our understanding. And so I, I guess the clarification would be, are we, are we providing a new bond? And so what would that value be?
Well, are you providing a new bond? We've been waiting for almost, I say, a long time. Let's just say that, a long time. And we took your inaction to tell us that you weren't going to give us a new bond.
Well, again, I'm, I'm not the bond guy, but as we discussed at the last meeting, I, I believe Mr. Webber brought up that the bond really doesn't do what it's, I, I believe what town would like it to do.
That's true, that's true.
And we, we, I, I think in our, in our response, we, we we put out a bond idea. I don't, and again, I'm, I'm not sure we we expect you to agree to that 100%, but I think that was a talking point. So, and, and I don't know if this is the appropriate forum to talk about what that bond would be, how much that would be. I know, I don't know, I want to have some further discussion on that. Because, and I, and I apologize, I'll back up a little bit. We, we had a kind of an offline discussion, I don't know, a month and a half-ish ago. We discussed some of these things. And the bond was never really brought up at that particular meeting. So when I asked Richard if he had an idea what you were thinking, he sent me an old letter from Bob McGee, the former DPW director, to the bond amount that was basically a full removal and replacement of drain lines that we had talked to a number of years ago. And that's, I think we're way past that. So we're, we're inquiring as to a bond amount. We're inquiring as to specifically which pipe we are going to line. And we, we were, we were in hopes that we could get on the fall town meeting for this, of this year and with conditional acceptances, knowing that there will be a bond amount, however that turns out to be, that may last for a year or two after the acceptance.
Okay, well, in terms of the bond, going back to that meeting we had a couple of years ago, we, we would very much like to get a bond that is appropriate to the, to the issues that we're dealing with and not have to deal with bonds that are a little bit off target. I don't have a number at the top of my head as to what is the appropriate number to, to ask for a new bond. But I can tell you that we can get that number to you fairly quickly after we put our heads together here offline from this meeting. And if you're in fact, as, as an organization willing to cancel the existing bond, two bonds and replace them with a new bond that's more appropriate to what we're looking at, we would welcome that.
Is there, I'm sorry to interrupt, is there only one solution? Is it the chemical pack or was it the?
It's the in situ lining, Gary.
In situ lining. Is there a, a cost per foot that could be calculated? So if we're coming up with another bond number and we have questionable lengths of drainage, we could make a calculation?
Yeah, so Beta has actually put together, we do have those numbers already.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and quite honestly, Beta's number a little off. It's a little more intensive for the larger lining. I'd be happy to provide the, that we got from in situ form. And I don't know, a lot of the board members may not be familiar with in situ form, but it, it is a basically a fiberglass and resin liner that's blown through the pipe with heat. And it's actually structural repair once it's cured, which is, you know, shortly after installation. I do have, actually, I believe I left a section with DPW. It, it may in a wastebasket by now, but it's actually a structural repair. So I think out of all of the repairs that we've done to date, it's the best option. We believe the best option. I believe, I don't want to talk for, for Phil from Beta, but I think we're all in agreement that that's inappropriate.
Yeah, I think. You're implying that you're repairing a cracked pipe and not a collapsed pipe or something like that?
Correct, yep. And none of, none of the, oh, there are, there are some cracks, there are some chip bells. There is, there is not a lot of intrusion today, water infiltration. And there is no evidence of, I'll say a catastrophic failure, for lack of a better term. There's no, there's no pipe that's half size it should be and pieces fallen out of it and you know, sinkholes in the road, all that kind of thing.
And, and wherever this repair had already been put in place and we went back and scoped, none of this area that was repaired with the in situ liner, none of that failed?
No.
That's right, that's right, yeah. Okay, so, so to sum up, you're going to send us a, a letter that says, hey, we really think we should not in situ line sections, section, section, so and so. You're going to provide Phil with the, the cost per, per foot of in situ for the various pipe sizes. We're going to give you back a response on that letter in terms of what, which sections to, to line and not line within a week. And shortly thereafter, we'll figure out what the new bond number is and hopefully you will agree that, that you will cancel the two existing bonds and replace them with the new bond in the amount that we, that we recommend. Did I get that right?
I think we have to look at that bond and make sure we're in agreement with it and it's appropriate from our side and I believe it will be. So I, as far as our letter to you, it will be very similar to what we, we sent. Only we will specify just because we're, we're kind of looking at this June 2020 exhibit, if you will, showing the, the various effects in those areas. We will be specific between which manholes we intend to line. And we can include the size of the pipe if that's easier, but I'm not sure that really matters. I think it's just we agree to replace or, I'm sorry, reline from manhole A to manhole Z, whichever ones they are. So that everybody can say, everybody can look at the same exhibit and say, okay, from 47 to 51 is sever and that will be mine. And we'll also call out ones we don't believe need to be mine.
Right.
And that will be based on Data's report exclusively, basically the the areas that are noted as satisfactory.
Okay, understood. All right, thank you, John.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Anything else before we move on to our next topic? All right, well, let me backtrack just a little bit. At the beginning of the meeting, I was remiss in not congratulating and welcoming our new associate member, Chris Monford. I should have done that when I was introducing the members of the board. So welcome, Chris, and enjoy your stay on the planning board.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, next item, per Rich's suggestion, I think we will skip the Redwood Circle for now and.
No, we can, no, I'm sorry, we'll go to that. We do have, we do have folks with us from the neighborhood.
All right, then let's get, get to that one. All right, Redwood Circle, Noonhill Echo subdivision. This is a continuation from our last meeting of a public hearing to discuss potentially vote to pull a bond for failure to complete the subdivision roadway, roadway within the allowed time period. Okay, so Rich, why don't you start us off with that then?
Sure, so last Friday morning, we were able to, with the weather cooperating, go out and do a site visit. We met, so Blair Crane, DPW superintendent, superintendent, Barry LaRiviera, myself and Hugo Di Martino, who is the contractor who Mr. Dalzell was hired to complete the roadway construction aspect of the project, met on site and I, there is a letter. I think we can jump to it just for make sure I'm on the right one here as I get to it. So I forwarded the letter to the residents in the neighborhood as well as the board members. This was put together by Barry through the DPW department. So a few things that we, we did see out there and the pictures at the bottom kind of reflect that, that the, the pavement has cracked around the landscape aisle that they have in the cul-de-sac. And there was some thought of how that actually happened. More likely paving during the time when it was probably a little bit too wet was a contributor to that fact. So that needs to be addressed. There's curbing that needs to be reset. That is misaligned, fallen, so forth and so on. So that, that needs to be addressed as well as going through the process. There is the drainage structures and so forth, those need to be taken clean and cared for going forward. So there's a bunch of items on there and then one of the things that we touched on out there, which is in the letter too, that I did send out an email to some of the neighbors. So we've kind of, it's relative to the street trees and the landscaping within the cul-de-sac. Now, our initial thought was that to maybe make some reductions in the, the street tree aspect of it compared to the way the regulations were when this was approved. So we, we first started there. And then, and maybe, and then make some adjustments to the plantings in the landscape island as well for something that would be easier to maintain. And then, but bearing the fact that we don't really have the resources to maintain these landscape islands from a DPW standpoint, that they would essentially be adopted by the residents within the subdivision. So we started down that path as an approach. And then when we were there Friday, just discussing repair, you know, the repair work needed to be done. It is, it's a really nicely landscaped, well-done neighborhood. And with the trees, one of the things that we wanted, and I sent out an email to the residents to do a site walk with them and revisit the trees. So there's a couple. and revisit the trees. So there's a couple of things. DPW, as you know, has talked to the planning board about changing up street tree tree planting where the trees would be essentially on private property. They'd be made, they would be incorporated into a homeowner's landscaping lot, but provide a street tree effect from a design standpoint, but not within the DPW's maintenance. So that's one aspect which we like to talk to the neighbors about. And then the other thing is the concern about the landscape island. It became more of a concern planting wise, but the more we thought about it, the thought we wanted to discuss with the possibility is removing the landscape island where we would then reach out to have discussion, Mr. Dalzell, that perhaps just remove it, mill the whole entire cul-de-sac to repair the paving that's done, and then we would top coat it. So that way, you know, the DPW and Barry's online, he could speak up. The idea is start from maximizing infrastructure to make sure it lasts for a long period of time. So the neighbors that are there and DPW is not going to worry about failing, cracking paved road till we're all retired, so to speak. And so that's that's priority number one. And then priority two, that kind of weaves into that, we've talked about the landscape. And so the idea is it's kind of a combination, you know, one is make the landscaping work for the neighbors. So perhaps some of the plantings that were bush related that were at the end of cul-de-sac, maybe they get planted on some of the lots and incorporate. So we want to have a further open discussion about that. Because I think, and I'll let Barry chime in a couple moments, but the idea is while landscape island's great, they do have less pavement and they do provide aesthetic value. When we don't have subdivisions that get approved with an association, it's an open landscape maintenance issue that we're not really fully equipped to handle with on a town scale level. So that's why we're talking about those things in this particular subdivision is to look as maybe some better practices as we go forward. So that's kind of my intro, at least at the moment.
Oh, Rich, Rich, you did a great job of summarizing that. You know, one of the, one of the big issues with the with the cul-de-sac is the cracking of the asphalt. So there's two options we have to repair the asphalt of the cul-de-sac is to saw cut it, repair the sections and repave them, or mill the entire cul-de-sac. There's two catch basins. Maybe thirty, forty feet down the cul-de-sac. So we basically mill from the catch basins up around the cul-de-sac. In our discussions, you know, we're the developer needs to reset all the granite curb in the cul-de-sac, which was never done. It's all lying there in piles. So it would make it easier by eliminating the island to pave and restore that area as a cul, as a, as a paved cul-de-sac. You know, I've talked to plenty of before is we don't have the manpower to maintain mow, trim, all the cul-de-sacs in town. Luckily, we have a few that, you know, residents have taken over and they maintain them, maintain them themselves. Plowing them is a nightmare. So now we have a big circle in the middle that we have to drive our trucks around. So we, we do have, you know, several cul-de-sacs in town that don't have islands. Those are easy to maintain, easy to plow. We saw this as an opportunity maybe to make this adjustment to have a cul-de-sac without an island. Would also free up a little bit money that we were hoping to free up money like we're just talking about the 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 street trees, you know, being out there and seeing the street, it's actually really nice. They did a great job of preserving and maintaining a lot of mature trees. You know, so adding street trees to this situation in the, in the number that we were looking at, maybe we scale it back a little bit. We think it'd be more appropriate to the overall setting. And ultimately, this will probably hopefully end up reducing some of the dollars. You know, the curb work alone, we're looking at, you know, over four hundred feet, linear feet of curb work that needs to happen out there. The curb isn't, granite curb is an extreme disrepair. The sidewalk is cracking in certain areas, so they're going to have to address the sidewalk. Between myself and Blair, I mean, I like his philosophy of it, we, we're more concerned about the the infrastructure. We want to get it done right. We know it's been out there for a while. Let's take the opportunity and and get the infrastructure solid, so we don't have to worry about it for ten to fifteen years, you know, maintaining the street trees that are there or that are decided to go in, isn't going to be a heavy lift. But the heavy lift right now is getting that roadway complete to the standards that we're not going to have to worry about for a long time. Because the worst position we want to be in is the town taking over this roadway. And then two years from now, we have to go back out there, address the drainage, address, you know, the road, the sidewalks, any of the asphalt issues. So we have a couple, you know, out of the box ideas, you know, these are things we, you were kind of throwing out there, we haven't discussed with the planning board before, but I think there's some, there's some good points that we should think about to help reduce the costs of the finishing the project and basically allowing us to maintain it in the future.
Aaron, Gary, your thoughts?
I was actually going to ask Aaron if there was anything out of the design review board related to the the issue. Do they, do they have recommendations as different materials or different designs?
I think that would be a great issue to bring before the design review board. I guess my thoughts here are I guess I'm taking the mic from Gary here. I'm more interested in what the current residents in the neighborhood are interested in as well, too. I mean, they bought into a neighborhood that was sold on a certain a certain aspect and it sounds like we're trying to, we're considering changing that aspect. And I'd be interested to hear what their their take on it is.
I can speak to that. So I'm one of the residents, I'm Bill Campbell, and I live at four Redwood. And I think, I mean, I know some of all the neighbors are on the call and they can speak up if I'm not representing their views. But I think you just hit the nail on the head in terms of like, we moved in four years ago and you sort of have an expectation of what would happen. We have a cul-de-sac. We know there are plans to finish the drainage, just the road, put up the street sign, et cetera. So we'll be coming up on four years. We have the street sign, which I think is a good accomplishment. And then for some of the other things, I understand it might be cheaper or easier to not do what the town originally planned and what the developer agreed. But that's not what I think is the right thing to do. I think if you purchase a house, move into a town, there's existing plans. Those should be completed. And then I think as a precedent, it's up to you what you want to do. But if you have developers have plans that are approved, you allow them not to do it for four years, not to attend the meetings, not to do things on time, not to finish the existing plans, to change the plans. I just wonder if that's the precedent you want to set. And then from our point of view, I'm not sure if it's really our fault that costs have changed over the years. Maybe they've increased. Maybe the original work wasn't done correctly, or maybe it wasn't maintained properly for some years. And I'm not sure why residents should be penalized for that. And then I agree in general, though, what Barry said in terms of infrastructure, I think we're all interested in that. Above anything else, you want to have good infrastructure so you don't have problems every year. And for some things like the plantings, I think it's a good idea to walk the street. And we've all had landscaping done privately and paid ourselves to make sure that the street looks appropriate and sort of fits in with the rest of the town to some sort of public areas when you first enter the the cul-de-sac and the cul-de-sac itself that have been neglected since the beginning. And it'd be good to finish those and have it look nice and proper, like many other areas of the town. And I don't know if Anell or Jonathan have different views, but that's, that's what I think we should do.
What, before you move on to the other residents, what's your position on the the island and the cul-de-sac?
Well, I would keep it. I mean, you know, when we bought the house, there was a cul-de-sac, we assumed it'd be finished. That's sort of what we've been told. And sure, it might be difficult or there's not money or other things, which, you know, I'm not really, I don't really have all the town's finances in front of me to know whether that's true or not. The taxes seem relatively high, but I know we have less commercial infrastructure with the neighboring towns. I'd keep the cul-de-sac, finish it, have it, have it look nice. If it's a requirement that the, that we as neighbors have to maintain it, then I guess we could do that.
Okay, thank you. Can we hear from, can we hear from some of your other, other neighbors there, please?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I just want to second Bill's remarks. There's not much to add, except that we would like to keep the island. I'm wondering, though, if we could remove the sidewalk, if if, is that an opportunity or possibility, Barry?
No, we can't remove the sidewalk. The sidewalk has to stay. That's part of the subdivision.
So you would be maintaining it, right?
Yep.
Other than that, we, we're just hoping that the island stays. And I think we're in agreement to to adopt it and to take care of the landscaping part.
Yeah, like, like we initially said, you know, this was some out of the box thinking, you know, we were, we have we had to look at things differently sometimes, and this was just an opportunity. You know, we do have a lot of cul-de-sacs in town that don't have the island. Some do. I said, I don't know if there was ever a standard that was set. So like I said, it was, it was more of a you know, can we save a little money by not having it? Put that money towards, you know, the infrastructure, paving the road and doing the drainage. So unfortunately, you know, we, all we have to work with is what's in the bond. So we have to get creative to be able to solve this whole, whole problem.
All right, thank you, Barry. Is there any, any other neighborhood would like to chip in?
Yes, I just have one more additional comment.
Please, please.
If, if removed them, I wonder if removed, traffic might be increased and the island is sort of a traffic calming mechanism right now. We have children and pets on the street. So let's, let's keep that in mind as well as we make the decision.
Thank you, thank you.
And and I would just add, this is Jonathan, I'm down at six Redwood Circle. I would just kind of add to that, that in terms of, I think the group's you know, main focus down here, we care less about adding trees, kind of as Barry and Richard already pointed out. And I think in terms of priorities, we'd like to see the island preserved, you know, as as an alternative to the trees if it came down to that.
Okay, thank you. All right. So Rich, it sounds like we need to make a recommendation on on what Barry has offered.
Yeah, as soon as I, as I mentioned at the outset, the discussion on this, we're going to, I already sent out an email to all the neighbors and I did see they've been getting back to me. So I want to you know, we'll figure out that time, we'll do the walk and then we'll talk through the rest of this as far as. But we got their feedback on the you know, as far as the landscaping goes, you know, just, we just want to follow up on the, on the street trees and that, that way then I can communicate that back to to Mr. Dalzell. And then, as I mentioned earlier, we do need to set up a meeting with Mr. He was not able to make this meeting tonight, but we discussed that with Mr. Dalzell, Mr. Di Martino. Because we all went through the items that are on our list and make sure Mr. Dalzell understands completely what needs to be done to bring this to to completion on the items that do need to be repaired. So.
Yeah, it sounds like, it sounds like the list in terms of cost has grown a little from what he and Mr. Di Martino agreed originally too, right?
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, it has, yep.
Hugo did a great job itemizing everything. I mean, one of the good things about Hugo, he, he takes pride in what he does. And he doesn't want to cut corners, so he wants to make that road the best he can, which is a little tough for Mr. Dalzell, because we only have a small pool of money to do it. So there's going to be a little bit of give and take there. But I think, you know, Hugo is the right guy for the job. I've worked with him in the past at other subdivisions and he wants to bring this thing into where it should be.
Sure.
Problem is, is that we have that bond to work with it. The other, you know, we do have another option that we were discussing while we were out there too, would be the, if we really got down to it, possibility of the DPW taking over the paving, the final paving of the roadway and of the sidewalks, because we can do it at a cheaper price as compared to what Hugo would be paying. But that's, you know, that's basically last case scenario. Let's get through everything else first and see what we have left for funding.
Sure, that's also a good, a good bargaining chip for discussion, right?
Walter, can I jump in with a question?
Sure, Aaron, go.
Barry keeps referring to working with a bond, but we haven't pulled the bond yet.
No, we haven't.
Voted to pull the bond, and I seem to remember Mr. Dalzell being interested in actually completing the work.
Yeah, but you know, you got to go by, that's probably the money that he's looking to use to finish that product, to finish his subdivision. He's not going to want to put any more money into it. So he's looking at that, that pool money there to be able to finish everything.
Yeah, so it's, so Aaron, it's kind of looking at it this way, we have a bond, we know it's there. We have an idea what needs to be done to be prepared. So we need to work with you know, Mr. Dalzell to have him finish it, but knowing that there's the bond there. So we're
I'm just, I'm not sure I'm buying into that logic, right? I mean, Mr. Dalzell signed on to complete a subdivision by a certain set of rules that were approved by the town. And the bond was there for the protection of the town. It wasn't there for us to negotiate with Mr. Dalzell to completion of his work. So, I mean, he, he, last we spoke to him, he was interested in finishing this work. So I haven't heard that he's not to date. So I don't know why we would be negotiating the agreed upon scope of work before he, he tells us he's not going to do it.
We're
That's a brilliant comment. Thank you, Mr. Hunt.
I agree. Good comment.
So let's, I just want to clarify, Aaron, the, we're not so two, number one. We're not suggesting at this point that Mr. Zell, Zell doesn't do it. The, the point of the discussion that Barry, myself, I'm trying to make to you, the board and the residents is that what is in the bond, if it were to be pulled by the town, the planning board is not enough to cover what needs to be done within the repair work and so forth. So our goal has always been for Mr. Dalzell to finish the development, not have the town have to do it. We're just being mindful of that there's a significant amount of granite repair work that needs to be done out there. And so like anything, when in these situations, when you go to somebody and they say, for example, it's going to, it's fifty dollars and all of a sudden you say it's a hundred dollars, yeah, my obligation is, no, I'm going to do fifty. So we need to have him work with us to get to the end zone, the end line on this. So.
I, I get what, I get what we're hearing. I just don't know that I agree with it. But what we've heard from the neighborhood is, is that they're willing to give up some street trees and take on the maintenance of the circle to get the circle and the rest of the work done to the level that that they bought into. It seems reasonable to me.
Does. And the, and the maintenance of the trees as relates to the cul-de-sac is really outside the scope of Mr. Dalzell finish the subdivision. So if you finish it right away, that would still be the same situation. So that's really outside of it. It's just having a method going forward to be able to ensure that these landscape islands get maintained. That's really what we're trying to work with, adopt and cul-de-sack with the neighbors.
Right.
That's the purpose. So I will, I, as a follow up, I will, we'll set the site walk up with the neighbors, we'll walk through it and go through and then see where we're at and relative to street trees. And then we can go then talk to Mr. Dalzell about street trees and then the remaining work that needs to be done and get a schedule from him when he's going to execute it.
Yeah, and I think that the other issue that you raised, Barry raised, is the island. I think the sense of the board, certainly my sense, is that we ought to insist that that island be constructed and maintained through the volunteers, volunteerism of the residents who have agreed to do that. Now, in the future, if we get a development with a, with a cul-de-sac, we certainly can entertain not building it with an island in the middle of it, but we have a plan that we've agreed to and they've agreed to, and they being the residents when they moved in, and I think we ought to execute it.
No, completely understood. And we're, we're, we're asking in this case and the, and the residents are being gracious to help adopt that island. I'm just
Right.
It's, it's identified of a apartment without really a long-term maintenance.
Yeah, and I think, I think I understand where Barry's coming from. He wants to make it easy to maintain and and, and make sure that it gets plowed properly, et cetera. On the other hand, it is, it is a commitment that was made to the residents and that's, we ought to execute it.
No, I totally agree.
Yeah, we, yeah, we agree with that as well. It was just, you know, like I said, it was an idea we were just throwing out there. See if we could just expedite things and save a little money. So that's not a problem.
Okay. Anything else?
I was going to ask, I know Mr. Dalzell was out of town for one meeting and he's probably was invited to this meeting. And was there some target dates for things to be accomplished?
Uh, yeah, it was about two years ago. Um.
No, and I, I thought there was, uh, I thought he agreed to move forward with some of the work.
Well, I don't think he had a, a, a target. It was a matter of getting started with the contractors that he'd hired. Yeah. I, I don't remember a target date. Um.
Okay.
Just.
It was a, it was a rough target date of when we could start doing the work, you know.
Yeah, start, but not finish.
That's right.
Right. Um, so.
What's, what's, what's our course of action this evening?
So the course of action is, uh, first, uh, as I mentioned earlier, we're gonna walk the, I have to look at everybody's schedule, just walk the street with the name, talk about the street trees. And then in the meantime, um, get a scheduled meeting together between DPW, Mr. Di Martino, myself to go through what needs to be done, so he understands what his obligation is and, and then have Mr. Di Martino start, start the work. So, um, so I'll have to report back on when he's ready to start to the board and to the residents. So hopefully we can get a meeting with them within a week or two, tops.
So we need a motion to continue?
And we do need, you do need technically a motion to continue the bond.
Yeah, we should, we should continue the, uh, public hearing on this, yeah.
Right, yes.
So the chair will entertain such a motion?
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
All right, uh, all those in favor say aye. Mr. Uh, Searle.
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Uh, Chair says aye. All right, um. Anything else on this? First of all, I'd like to thank the neighbors for participating. Anything else on this topic before we move on?
Just to be clear, you did vote to, um, continue that to April thirteenth?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
At, uh, whatever time is appropriate on the agenda.
Thanks for listening to us and involving us. It's been, you know, a good process to have the dialogue. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
I second that. Thank you, people.
Okay, um. Rich, you had suggested we might take some items out of order. Do you want to continue on order or do you want to go out of order?
No, now I would like to get out of order and then jump into the B1 zoning.
Okay, sure.
That's okay.
Yeah.
All right, so let me, um. So as a introduction.
Josh is with us, okay.
Before you do that, you wanted, um.
Oh, we could take care of Rob.
You Rob came here?
Yeah, he is. Yeah.
That shouldn't take very long.
All right. Good evening. Hello, Rob.
All right, sorry if we got Rob there. Sorry, Rob. Um, so, um, I have, can you, am I sharing my screen? Are you seeing my screen or no?
No.
Not yet.
Okay, all right, now. Now you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, Mr. Kane's here to, uh, change a lot, a lot, one had been previously released. There was this A and R plan that was approved in twenty nineteen with, with the swapping of the sidelines and, and Rob can fill the board in the reason for, I think it's, makes sense once he tells you, but, uh, the, the reason is lot one has now been relabeled as lot one A. The original release was lot one, so it's, he's really just asking for a release amendment to, uh, lot one.
Have the lot, have the lot lines been changed?
Yes, so.
Okay, all right, go ahead, go ahead, Rob.
So we, we had asked for the A and R plan because of the, um, twenty-five foot setback in the fifty-foot, um, requirement between the homes. And so we had the A and R plan done, um, and I I, I believe it was done after we had, uh, I'm thinking of the timing. This got me a little bit off guard because I was thinking about the lot releases, um, for ten and eleven that we'll probably address in a minute. It, it's really a timing and a semantics issue. Um, lot two, two A, we were able to go to closing and the A and R plan was done prior, um, to the paperwork on the closing. Um, lot one, we just had, um, as lot one, and we didn't have the release done, um, until I think it was this spring. Um, and so we have a closing coming up on that. And the only paperwork we have is, uh, for a lot release as lot one. And it's really just sort of a housekeeping thing that Elizabeth Maitland is concerned about. Um, is when we get to the closing, if somebody's looking for the, the lot release for lot one A, we don't have that in hand.
Understand. Uh, Rich, can you blow this up a little bit so we can see that, uh, um, a little bit more?
So the, the, the A and R was approved and it, and it was just like I said, you got me a little bit off guard going back to this one.
Yeah.
Um. But the perimeter lot lines hadn't changed and, and all that. And like I said, we have closed on two a year ago. And it hadn't come up. Elizabeth just was concerned that if we get to closing, um, and their attorney or the bank is looking for the release for one A, we don't have that per se. And we didn't want to have to wait for another planning board meeting to get that released, you know, come April. So.
So I think, I think what's missing in the explanation is why the lot line changed?
Yeah.
That was in the very beginning, um, uh, board members. So that, the lot line changed, um, and I can't see the date. That was back in, uh, March of nineteenth, that looks like. Uh, March of, um, two thousand nineteen. There, you, there, there are two, um, rules on the setbacks for homes. And one is you have to be twenty-five feet away from, uh, a lot line, um, within the open space. And the other is you have to have fifty feet between the halls. And with these s- smaller lots that we have in the, the twenty-one, twenty-three thousand, um, square foot area, um, we weren't able to get, um, the fifty-foot setback that we needed. Um, lot one has that unusual sort of dogleg, um, shape. So we had to push, uh, the house farther back on that lot. Um, and, and we really did just kind of a square footage exchange.
Some reason I'm not zooming in. Um, let's see.
Short answer is we did the, we did the A and R so we could, we could achieve the, um, fifty-foot between the house requirement.
Right, right.
Yeah, I, so, I mean, I, I understand it and it, it looks a little bit like administration and paperwork, but, you know, these are big houses on small lots. You know, we had a lot of conversation about density with this neighborhood and the development. You know, i- it was designed to be very tight. And these are the kinds of problems you run into when you put big houses in small lots.
Yep.
And recently, we also approved a density change related to accessory structures and pools for this neighborhood too. So, um, just talking out loud.
Ah, there we go. Now we can see.
So I think that, well.
Yeah, I'm not really asking for a response.
Really wasn't a density issue. It was an impervious issue.
Right, but it's, but it's, but the imperviousness is part of what controls the density of the neighborhood.
Right. Okay, so I see on this, I see now on the drawing where there's been a swap of, of square footage in order to comply with the setback issue. Okay. All right, so, uh, it, it sounds like, uh, we should entertain a motion to, uh, to amend the, the, uh, lot acceptance of lot one and make it lot one A. With, with the, with the amended, uh, uh, lot line.
So moved.
All right, we have a second?
Second.
All right, uh, all those in favor, Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Searle?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All right, thank you, Rob. I think you've got what you're needed. That's, I think, that is the only, the only item. Is that not rich for this evening for, uh, Norway?
We, I was looking to have lot ten and eleven released also.
Um, but, 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 but I don't think that was on the agenda, but any rate, um.
Was there a budget associated with?
Yeah, there was, there was a, uh, contribution to the, uh, open space.
Yeah.
Affordable housing, excuse me, affordable housing, uh, fund. And I don't know where we stand with that, Rich.
If it's not, if it's not on the agenda, we can't hear it coming. It's gotta be, it's gotta be advertised, right?
It's not on the agenda.
I'm sorry, Betsy.
It's on the agenda.
Oh, okay, great.
Lot ten is, right.
Lot ten.
Lot ten and eleven are both on the agenda.
Okay, all right.
So this, this is to, to clarify, this is the lot release prior to the issuing of a building permit um, for the open space account, different than the affordable home that's due at the closing, post-closing.
Correct.
Right.
So we are up to date as far as our payments related to the affordable housing.
Mm-hmm.
Contribution. And Mr. Kane is correct. This is, the payment right now is just into the open space.
And how much is that?
It's two thousand per lot, which is, which is, which is being put into the association, which is gonna be the one maintaining the open space.
Right. Have we seen the, uh, have we seen the transfer of funds so we can confirm that's been done?
Yes, we have.
Okay, all right. Well, in that case, um, this year we'll entertain a motion to release lots ten and eleven.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Searle?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, Rob, you're off and running.
Thank you very much, gentlemen, for your time.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, now we go back to the issue that you want to bring up, which is a discussion of, uh, B1 zoning, uh, recommendations.
Correct. So the, the first order of business as it relates to the, the B1 zoning I had sent out to the board members as well as the B1 committee members, um, it was a document that had highlights, um, which were highlighted in yellow and green.
Yep.
As to, uh, in clarification to what, um, the voting requirements would be as it relates to the new legislation that was passed, um, for multifamily housing, um, through the, um, it was a housing choice bill. And, um, I did hear back from, uh, Peter Mello, Town Council, who had actually, uh, had communicated back and forth with Jay Towlemann, who was the town moderator, that the two that I have identified in green, um, let me just pull up the document so I can, uh, we can screen share it. So. Just bear with me as I go get the. Um, so the one in green, there's two density, uh, or at least two articles that are eligible for a majority vote, uh, one of which was increasing density to sixteen units per acre. That proposed zoning change qualifies for a majority vote as well as changing the, uh, parking requirements within the B1. Is eligible for a, uh, a, a majority vote. The remaining articles as it relates to the B1, um, do not. They would still, um, be as a two-thirds vote. So from the standpoint of the idea of bundling, you have two that could be bundled as a majority vote. And the rest would be subject to the two-thirds vote.
In other words, you, you, if you bundle, you, you, you potentially penalize those two articles by requiring a, a two-thirds vote instead of a majority, right? That's what you said. Yeah.
Yeah, if, if you bundle, it, it.
Yeah.
It raises the voting requirement. It doesn't lower.
Yep, understood. Um, wh- while you're searching for that document, um, Rich, there was another issue that, uh, came up that you were gonna bounce off Town Council, which was the, the new law that the governor signed recently requiring a, a district within a half mile of a train station, uh, uh, didn't mention anything about commercial and we're, we're trying to get commercial into town center. And the question was, does this district, since it does include commercial, uh, qualify under that new law? Did we get an answer on that?
So that's where there were, well, and Josh is on, we can talk about that too. Um, the opinion is that what we're doing would qualify, but we're, um, seeking, they're actually, you know, from a timing perspective, they're actually scrambling around, uh, writing guidance and so forth as far as how this would apply, the new, uh, housing choice amendments to forty A. Um, but the prevailing thought is that, um, this would qualify, um, because it does meet, it's within the half mile. It is sixteen units or greater. Or sixteen units per acre. The legislation is fifteen units. So, um, we believe that it does. We need to seek continuous further clarification on that, but.
Okay, so our, our, our council thinks it does, but we haven't heard from the state to clarify that yet, Brett?
We haven't yet.
Okay, okay. All right, enough of that. We can get back to these articles.
Okay. Quick question about the green, the two green comments that you were just talking about. And the first one, which is what, I for A eleven? You, that's a requirement, but yet it needs to go for a vote. What would happen if it got voted down? Because my understanding is you're making the change because bedroom is illegal.
So we, um, so we, first, we did change the bedroom issue before. So, um, before we had maximum two bedrooms per unit. Now, the existing zoning is just sixteen bedrooms per lot, which is from a legality standpoint is fine.
It is. Okay, I'm sorry then. Okay, I thought bedroom had to be eliminated.
Yeah, it just, um, but conventional zoning is not really regulated on.
No, I understand. I, I thought we were, um, controlling our bedrooms.
Yeah, we took, we did, we already previously took care of that last.
Okay.
Yep. Um. So the other, um, the other thing I did want to talk about, um, as it relates to the, at least the proposed amendments is in relation to the affordable how, affordable housing requirement.
Yep.
And, uh, I do, we do have Susan Jacobson with us tonight to talk about that, uh, as well as the Affordable Housing Trust Director. Um, and I just, I'll, I'll put it up on the screen as we can kind of talk through it.
I believe Peter Diamond is with us as well. Is that not true?
And Peter is, yep, and Peter with us as well. Um. So. Let me get to, uh, let me go in a wrong way and go in a wrong way.
Is it H three B?
Yeah, here we go. All right, it's on the screen now. Can you see it?
Yep.
All right, I'll just zoom in a little bit more. So while I understand the goal is to, uh, increase the amount of, I mean, that's too much. Is it okay? Can you see?
That's fine.
All right. Um, well, it is an important goal to increase the amount of affordable housing. The town is working towards that, that ultimate goal. My concern was that as we spent the last, um, you know, two years plus, uh, working on the zoning and we had, you know, gone through some financial modeling, uh, feasibility analysis and had heard directly from, you know, the, the developer who developed next door, which was eighteen Union Street, that, um, you know, ground up mixed use is, um, it's challenging to, uh, from a cost and market perspective. It's not as easy as one might think um, to make it all work financially. And by lowering down to starting the bottom at six, essentially next door, um, which, you know, understandably, would require affordable unit. And the concern is, again, it, it's, it, it can, it's gonna, there's a potential to counter the objective, which is to try to create mixed use development in town. development in town center, provide some housing in town center, provide economic vitality, provide commercial space, and increase the tax base. Um, so, on one hand, you have these other objectives, and you have one on the other side, which may imbalance the whole thing. And where I think there was really strong community support for what was next door. So, you know, it was eight units, commercial on the first floor, well done, would like to see it replicated. And I think many would like to see it, are we pushing, you know, are we then making this imbalanced and feasible?
They don't have to put the affordable there, right? They have other options.
So, as it relates to the affordable component of our bylaw right now, um, if it was ownership, but next door is rental, so there is no other option for rental beyond providing affordable housing of affordable units within the, the building itself.
They do not have a cash option, they cannot pay into the Affordable Housing Fund.
They do not, it's only, it's only under, uh, ownership now, um, you know, I'll have, Sue can touch on it a little bit now. Um, we did, we have previously discussed, and we'll talk about a little bit tonight, again, we're gonna be, um, CPC is funded on the production, the affordable housing, uh, excuse me, housing production plan this year. Um, I think those are very valid things to talk about through that process, and look at other communities' best practices, and perhaps, um, you know, maybe that might be an option that we give consideration to, um, but as of right now, we don't. And as it relates to rental, there's an annual process for income verification. With ownership, it's one time. Um, so there's an ongoing annual certification process that would need to take place, which could result in, um, having to have basically rolling lotteries, because if somebody income improves, takes them outside the income eligibility, they'll have to vacate the apartment, and then they'll need to find a new tenant. Because it's not, these, these smaller projects aren't scalable to say, okay, well, you know, you've, your income has gone up, you stay where you are, and then we'll bring in somebody else, you don't have that kind of tendency changeover to do that. So the only option for someone to stay compliant would be to terminate their lease and have them vacate, and then seek another under the, under the present system, so.
So if I can add a little bit to this, Rich?
Sure, absolutely.
Um, so it works very similar for rentals as, uh, our local housing authorities do. Um, they are committed to, uh, coming in under a certain income. Um, just as a little bit of an example, I did some, uh, little bit of digging around on the internet, and in, uh, Norwood right now, they have some one and two-bedroom apartments, I'm sorry, studio and one-bedroom apartments. A studio is fourteen forty-five per month, no utilities included, and a one-bedroom is sixteen twenty-five per month, no utilities included. And it is something that, uh, just like in a, in a public housing development, it is something that you have to recertify each and every year. Uh, the tenant is given the option, if they have come out of certification, if you will, of staying in that unit and paying market rate. Um, but there, there certainly is, you know, when you're purchasing a home, once you're in the home, uh, you know, if you get a promotion or a job change, and it results in a higher income to you, um, that's has no bearing on the, on the purchase of your home, you have to remain, uh, within the income limits and the assets limits through the closing of the home. So it makes it very different than, um, than a rental property.
It, it, it seems to me the discussion of, of rental versus ownership misses the point here. Uh, the point, for me at any rate, uh, the point is, going back to one of the things that Rich said at the beginning, which is, um, our, by, by including affordable housing here in the, uh, in this article, are we not defeating the objective that we're trying to achieve? It seems to me that, that, that a developer is going to take a very jaundice look at this particular article, the way it's written, and say, hey, I can't afford to do this, I just can't make any money out of it, I'm not gonna do it. Um, I, I'm, I'm very, very skeptical that we should put, uh, this kind of affordable housing into this article, uh, for the B1 district. Uh, I think affordable housing is a very noble and worthy goal, and something the town should be constantly working at, but I think we're shooting ourselves in the foot by putting it in here.
And, and I'm. Let me, let me jump in there, um, I, we're, we're, we're arguing hypotheticals right now. Uh, it's worth looking at the B1 district and seeing how many below one-acre sites there are, right? Um, actually, it's below a half an acre site, where you're talking about six, the difference between six and ten units, right? You're talking about essentially a three-quarter site. Uh, by a quick look, we're talking about two, two sites, maybe three sites in town. So, you're not talking about much. Um, the housing market has never been hotter. People are moving out of Boston at record rates. Uh, people are less interested in living in cities, and more interested in living in the suburbs on train lines. Right, uh, we've had this conversation before about, you know, where does affordable housing go in this town? Uh, where does it make more sense from a planning perspective than to put it in town center, near the train station, right? There are other options to provide incentives to developers to develop, right? We can add another half a story, we can increase density, we can lower taxes, we can decrease parking. Uh, so, by no means is, you know, that is affordable housing the only trigger, uh, in this conversation. So, you know, in summary, my point is, is we should be increasing the amount of affordable housing in the B1 district, not decreasing it.
Uh, I disagree with you totally on that, uh, but that's all right, Gary, what do you, what do you think?
Um, I, I, um, I, I've heard Aaron speak of this before, my highest level comment would be, I don't think that all of the affordable housing should be in the B1 district. Um, I, and I can see a place for some of it, and I can agree with the fact that, uh, the statistics that you're stating, people are moving out of Boston. Uh, people are gonna continue to do that, mostly because of what's been going on the past year, which isn't gonna be solved in the near term and might become a new way of life, and also because many businesses, large companies are realizing, uh, this is, this is from New York City, right? It's never gonna be like it used to be, people are gonna work from home, and they don't have to commute into New York City anymore. So, uh, some of the points I could challenge that, that you're making, because that might even be current statistics that apply right now. I think over the next few years, the town center may not be the most ideal place. I understand that if you create jobs in the center as well as having, um, apartments, and having commuter rail and other means of, uh, commuting, I, I, it does sound like it's a great deal. I just don't think that all of the units should be in the center of town. So I, I, I am okay with increasing the density around the few properties that remain there. I don't think it could have any huge impact on us to change these numbers. Where Rich started with this conversation was only about driving the number ten down to six, and I can, and I can see, um, um, was it Tommy LaRusso built eighteen Union, and I guess that's who you spoke to. So I can, I can understand that, I just thought there should be a means to, uh, contribute elsewhere to the Affordable Housing Fund, even for an apartment. I don't know what the legalities are that seem to be barring us from doing that, and why we couldn't put something else in place that stills, still addresses that. Um, I, I don't think that with the amount of properties that are available around the town center, things could get out of control.
Well, I think, and then, I think to circle back, and, no, the affordable housing, it, I think we all agree that it's, it's a, the town center is an appropriate spot, and it's a good place for affordable housing. But we do not, we do not allow residential-only development, so, um, in town center, it has to have a commercial component to it. We talked about the challenges of building a building, renting commercial space, and trying to attract it from a financing standpoint to make it work. Um, so, I think, yeah, if it was strictly residential, yeah, there's a huge market, and you probably could absolutely, um, ratchet up the affordable housing. But when you're talking about trying to bring up a mixed-use building, and make sure it's viable and rented and filled and not empty, um, I think you're really challenging it, that you're gonna defeat yourself, you're almost, you're, you, you're gonna shift the balance towards people wanting to do all residential, you're gonna, you're gonna lose those opportunities, it's all well and good, and tax incentives and tax breaks. I, I understand conceptually, but I don't see the town residents are concerned about taxes rising. To give someone a tax break, I think is a tall, tall order that is unrealistic to consider at this point. And those are, they're tools, but you don't get to use all the tools in every situation. So that's my, again, um, concern about it, we, and the concern is, if you do it, and you have a level at this point, and you do not have interest, and people do stall out, it's, it's a monumental task to say, well, we, we made a mistake, we made it too hard, we thought it was, it was okay, and now you wanna release it the other way. It's easier to tighten things down to loosen things up. So, bear that in mind, I just, I'm just, from, you know.
Well, uh, my, my perspective is a little bit, uh, a little bit different, too. Uh, we've had a committee of, of, of citizens and, and board members working for two years on revising the zoning in the B1 district in order to, to get some development going, to provide incentives for people to, uh, uh, to come in and, and build on the lots that, uh, that are in town center. Uh, we, we definitely want commercial development as well as, uh, as residential. Uh, the residential is there as an attraction to bring the commercial development in, we require mixed-use, uh, development. We've, we've put in an awful lot of effort to get to this point, we probably can take anything that we propose and put it in front of the town, a town meeting, and have a reasonable chance of having it pass. But having said that, um, now you've got something that, on the books, that developers will look at if we, if we go ahead with the language that you're proposing, and we're gonna shoot ourselves in the foot, because I don't think they're gonna, they're going to do anything except say, all right, screw that, we're gonna do it forty B, and away we go, and it's all residential. So, um, I'm very concerned with the language we've got proposed in there, I think we ought to, uh, take it out.
So, so do you disagree with any, uh, all, all, it was always ten percent, but you're disagreeing with the next two steps that are then?
Yes, I'm, I'm disagreeing that, that we should, uh, in, put any escalation in there, depending on the size of, of the development.
Regardless of what those percentages might be.
Yes, regardless. That's, that's my position, anyway, that's my argument. Now, I don't know where everybody else is on this, there's a lot of people who are, are on the committee, who are, are with us this evening, and I'd like to hear from them, what they think. Right there?
Let me, yeah, let me stop sharing so I could see, um, Ed's with us, Gary, do you have, uh, any thoughts that you want to share?
Yeah, this is Gary Sullivan, um, the only main thought I'd like to share tonight is, is that, you know, affordable housing is gonna come to town so, uh, center, whether it's forced down our throats or not, um, that's not some sort of a scary ultimatum, it's just, it's just a reality, whether it's tomorrow, or in two years, or in ten years. Um, so, um, yeah, I, I, I kind of support this as, as written.
And so, just to clarify, let Ed go, is that all, what I'm doing, or what the proposal that you have is just to shift it a little bit to the bottom is ten, where it is today within the bylaw, and it can, and the, the percentages escalate up from there. It's just, it's not down to six, that's all. I mean, maybe that's not all, but that, that is essentially this change.
And, and the town that's adjacent to us did something very similar, the high end was only fifteen percent, but the low end started at six, and they had a three-tiered, um, uh, affordable housing statement or scale that, uh, is similar to this.
Yeah, um.
Yeah, I would, I would just say, uh, Gary, to that, that, um, the town next to us that has done that is certainly, if you've driven in their downtown area recently, it certainly looks very different than, than Norfolk. Um, and, and I, I think to, you know, to add to what Rich has said, if we reduce it down to, you know, we're talking about, we're already at, if you do, you know, this number of units or more, it's this much. If we reduce it down to six.
I'm, I'm not pushing for the six.
Okay, I, I, I just think it, it, to, I think Walter's absolutely right, at that number, we are going to have developers who are telling the town that they can't make commercial work, um, without units above them. Um, and now we're going to, you know, add an affordable to it, and what I think, although, you know, affordable housing is my job, so I'm not here to not promote affordable housing. Um, but I think that there are also some other costs that the average individual isn't aware of, whether it's, you know, homeownership units or rental units. And, you know, there are a monitoring agent fees, there are recertification fees, there's fees for lottery agents, I'm, I'm working on the Enclave Lottery, and the, uh, twenty-five Rockwood Road Lottery, um, and they're, they're significant fees, and it's not, I'm not trying to sell woe is me for the developer, you know, this is what they, this is their, their business, and it's what they get into. But I think going down to a number like six really, I, I, I agree with Rich, I think it could send some things in a direction that maybe we don't want to go in.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine staying at ten.
Thanks.
Anyone, anyone else from the B1 committee, uh, like to chime in?
Yeah, I, I, I would. Sorry, yeah. I, I guess I, I agree with Gary's, uh, point about, we talked, we've talked about affordable housing for a long time. So, I, I think we have to do whatever we can to encourage it. I don't know that I know what the right number is, if we're talking about tweaking a number between, you know, one or two percent. I mean, that's a, that's just tweaking, but I, I think we should try to get the maximum number that's reasonable, uh, without sacrificing that just for the sake of, um, what we think the downside might be. I, I'm not, I'm not an affordable housing advocate, but I, I believe that it's the right thing to do, and I think that should be our, our objective.
Kevin?
Hey, Walter, can I just chime in for a sec?
Uh, please.
So, as with many of the conversations we've had related to B1 zoning, everything has been a push-pull. Where is gonna, where are we gonna find our balance between being able to accommodate for the financial feasibility for a developer to actually build something versus the expectation of the community? And then also, what the town has in their master plan versus what's been proposed in the past? And where do we find the middle ground for all these issues that we've tried to balance? When it comes to affordable housing, and we have to look to the primary goal of the B1 committee. The B1 committee is to make changes to zoning to encourage the growth that's highlighted in the master plan. And during that process, we identified that affordable housing could work its way into that to overlap and create some alternative benefit to the efforts that were being put into place. However, I don't want to stray away from that core goal that we had to encourage growth, to see proposals come through, to start evaluating projects. I think when we originally pitched the idea of being able to incorporate something like this into what we had in, as far as a slate of proposals, it was very appealing, because that was a, not only a great sales tool to be able to, uh, you know, achieve our affordable housing goals as a municipality, but also for the community who's gonna be looking to vote on these things, we have to identify some of the benefit to them, uh, for us to be able to make these changes, and one of the benefits was to be able to start making some gains towards our affordable housing goals. That's one of the offsets to the changes that we're making. Uh, but when you look at the numbers, as Ed had mentioned before, we're not talking about the difference between five affordable units and. Five affordable units and, you know, a forty B twenty percent apartment building that's going to give us sixty to seventy units. We're talking about the difference between five to six units at a separate time to ten units at a certain time. And right now with our affordable units, uh, currently trailing somewhere rich, correct me if I'm wrong, around a hundred twenty to a hundred and thirty that we would need to get to ten percent. That's not necessarily pushing the needle for us to have measurable impact on that number.
Right.
So to that end, I mean, if it was, I think this would be a little bit of a different conversation, right? If we were talking about a larger building that may get us there. Maybe this conversation changes a little bit. But with that type of impact, from my perspective, I think we should fall back on our core goal, try to get some proposals in front of the planning board. And try to get some things actually developed in town center that fit that mixed use goal. So I would line on the side of, uh, making the changes as Rich recommended. Thank you.
Yeah, I I I think that, uh. The town's affordable housing goal of ten percent, uh. Isn't going to be solved in town center. It's going to be solved through something like, uh, a major development, uh, on Southwood property, for example. Uh, where you get a couple of three hundred, uh, units or a big apartment building or, uh, uh, and you all of a sudden rack up, um. A large number of units that you can count against your objective. Uh, a development here, uh, similar to eleven, um, Union Street, which puts four or five units on the table, a couple of which are affordable. It's just not going to get you there. You're not going to, uh, uh, accomplish what you want to accomplish. And and I'm afraid you're going to discourage development, uh, of a mixed use development in town if you put too heavy a burden. Uh, on that developer with the the extra requirement of affordable housing. So I I think we ought to stick with the ten percent level regardless of of, uh, the number of units in in town center. That's just my my perspective on this. I'm I'm so concerned that all this good work is going to go down the drain. And all we're going to get is, uh, forty B applications that say, hey, screw that. We can't afford it. Uh, we're not going to make any money on commercial and and affordable. Um, so we're just going to go forty B. And then we then we get housing in in the town center and we don't get any commercial development.
And, uh, Walter, just to clarify, is is it, um? Just, just, is it more than just moving the benchmarks? It's ten percent period, not scaling it up? Is that just a.
That's right, ten percent period from.
Okay, alright, I just want to be clear, alright. I know Chad popped in. I don't know if he wanted to. He had a chance to catch his breath and think about it. I think he there he is, yeah.
Chad's with us, okay.
Yeah, I I do see Chad, so, um. Chad, we're talking about the affordable housing, uh. I don't know how much we we popped in, but essentially just changing. I'll show it on the screen. I sent it out to everyone, but, um. Just shifting the bar on the bottom of the floor to ten where it is today and then scale it up from there.
Chad, you with us?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, well, uh, the 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 discussion prior to your, uh, joining us is on this topic has been, uh. Rich opened it up to say, uh, we could take that bottom limit, uh, and go from, uh. Six to ten. I forget exactly what he said, but in in essence, drop the bottom, uh, requirement down a little bit and leave the rest of it pretty much the way it was. And, uh, uh, my counterargument has been, uh, that, uh, I think we ought to be ten percent regardless of the number of units. Uh, otherwise we risk, um, turning off potential developer who can't make money, uh. At these step increments and, uh, we're going to blow two years of work by saying, hey. Uh, these requirements are are requirements. We can't do that. Uh, see you later. And the guy will say, I will see you later. I'll see you with a forty B development. And then we're going to get nothing but housing and no commercial development in town, in town center. So my argument is we ought to scrub this and just put the ten percent in and leave it at that.
Walter, do we have any information, um, supporting your 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 fear? Um, have developers come to us and said that, you know, this wouldn't work, have they gone to other towns with similar?
We're getting terrible feedback from you, Chad. I don't know what happened, um.
It was Chris.
I think it was Chris.
Oh, it was Chris, I'm sorry.
Is this any better?
No.
Uh, but I I guess basically Chris was asking if we know that the statement you just made. Has has resulted in, um, detrimental effects in other towns. So, uh, but I only know of Walpole was the example we were using, uh, where they incremented up from six. I don't, I have no attachment to six at all. I could, I'm perfectly happy starting at ten. Um, but Walpole was the only one I Josh is somewhere on the line as well. He might be a voice to say. If other towns are doing the same change, um.
I I think it's worth revisiting the history here of this conversation. Sorry to jump in, but I think this is important, right? I mean, ten percent is what it is now. It it is not language that was proposed by the B one committee. The B one committee proposed fifteen percent and had discussions about twenty percent. So before this incremental change was, I think, I believe, recommended, uh, by a resident. Last time we talked, you know, we were talking about a fifteen percent number. Right? And then the last time we talked, we thought this incremental method was was appropriate, given increased densities. Right? And then what what Rich is bringing to us is is instead of setting the bottom of this increment at six units, we should set it at ten. Right? So there's a lot of numbers being thrown around. I just thought it was worth reiterating the history there.
Yes, that, a very good synopsis, Aaron. Thank you. That's right. Um, I mean, to answer your question, Chris, that we don't, well, first we don't have it on the books, so, um, so it's not. Uh, well, this here, we do have. Ten percent affordable housing, but we haven't had one that, you know, someone has turned away yet, so. From our standpoint, I I can't tell you that, um, that that's been the case as of yet.
But we do have, we, the only thing thing that I think we have, uh, is some anecdotal testimony from, uh, Tom DePlacido about. The economics of, uh, eleven, uh, Union Street and how he, uh, as I recall. And and I could perhaps be recalling it incorrectly, how it will be very difficult for him to, uh, build another one of those units, uh, because he. He probably couldn't make a lot of money doing it. And to those of you who were on the B one committee, I think entertained him one evening and heard his testimony to that effect. If if you can recall better than I, uh, please chime in and tell me what he said.
No, I think that. That is a fair, um.
Was that, what was the issue specifically though? Was it, there was no burden on him for affordable? Was it around the commercial or the residential? What what was it?
It was just more of the 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 challenges of ground up mixed use development.
Yeah.
From a market, you know, from a commercial, really probably more so from the commercial side of things. In his particular case, he partnered with. You know, Norfolk Credit Union, which was the property owner and they've done some, you know, creative financing as the anchor tenant. But that, his point was more of a, you know, fill in commercial space and make it all work. Uh, was was the issue. And we don't have, I mean, we do talk and Walpole is the one that we were referring to a little bit in here. You know, we don't have, um. A sewer pipe out front of all these properties, so, you know, there is additional infrastructure that they gotta build out to build it. Um, and what which is limiting to a degree on the site conditions potentially, so. You know, you add all those puzzle pieces together and that's that's where the concern about, um, you know, the smaller project. And and I don't want to, and we we kind of throw out sometimes a developer, well, you know. It might actually be a property owner that wants to redevelop their property, not a developer, um, too. And we have heard from, um, I'll say Mr. Ruggieri, who, you know, owns the property on, uh, where Linda's variety is. Um, across from, uh, the library. He's he's expressed interest in doing some redevelopment, not, he's not a developer. He's he's, well, him and his partner owns that property. And then the Pacinis are another one that have property. Maybe it's a developer, but it's, it could very well be them. Who's doing that parcel. And then, of course, there's Dunkin Donuts, which is the Primus family who owns Dunkin Donuts. It's them. It's not a. Developer per se. Um, so just some context. Chad?
Rich, could I, before we move on, I don't know if Chad's going to move off the top, but Josh Josh Fial from M P C, but just to add a little more context to that question as well. With the B one committee and the analyses that we did with with the group, uh, we did do some, uh, general pro forma analyses. For financial feasibility of the development program and the B one based upon the zoning, which did include affordable housing. And it showed that, uh, under certain conditions, I think it was, um, where the project is sort of owned by retained by a developer and rented. That there there were marginal, um, it was marginally feasible. So it did show that, you know, that all these characteristics get you there. But it wasn't, um, you know, a huge, uh, win in terms of the project. So I think that that rigid Rich's, um. Feeling here about this balancing act and the the, uh, the scale of the project as well is is the right direction. So, uh, I think that as you move smaller, uh, in terms of that unit count, it's diff- more difficult to carry the units, of course. And then, um. But I I think that there there is, the the analyses that we did, uh, did include affordable housing as a part of the the component. So just wanted to put that in to the conversation.
Uh, to to, uh, to Aaron's point earlier about, uh, town center is the place to put affordable housing, um. We have, um, two forty B projects going on now and another one approved. Um, we have Boyd's Crossing. We have the the Kelly property just across the tracks that is going up. Construction's underway and we have, um. What's the number, Rich? Uh, uh, it's on Main's Main Street.
Yeah, one ninety four Main Street, so it's, uh, thirty six townhouses.
Yeah, so there there are, um, there are town centered developments with affordable housing, um. That are that are going up and it. I I'm just very concerned that we're putting an added burden on, uh. On the B one core that is really going to discourage development, except for forty B and it's all residential then. So I I, again, my my, I'm not going to beat the drum any more than one more time, just to say that I think. That the, uh, affordable percentage ought to be ten percent across the board. And, uh, that's where I think we ought to recommend that we change this wording.
Chad?
Yep, I had a couple of things. One, uh, and I'm not sure if this is for Rich or Josh or both, but. Are we seeing other communities with a stepped program like this? And are they getting it put into their, um, into their legal documents as far as restrictions and?
Yeah, I mean, so there are, yeah, there are towns that are stepping and some that have gone down. Um, to six.
Yeah, but but it is, it's not necessarily applied to the center of their town, is it? It it it's.
Yeah, across the board.
Across the board, okay.
Board, right, right.
Okay, so so i- is, I guess the the question would be is, is the general trend to go to a stepped. Program like this across the board for the whole community or just for the core and, you know. Uh, is it, is this becoming the new commonplace to do this?
Uh, I can't, well, two, well, so for one, uh, Peter Diamond did submit a zoning petition. That would step it across town wide, um, that's proposed to be on the Springtown meeting warrant. Um, I don't know specifically, so I'm not going to speculate. I think that would be something I have to do some homework. Maybe Josh has a better.
I could jump in on Chad's question, right, Chad? So the issue is, is that, you know, to something that Walter noted, you. And the town is certainly exhibiting, we're never going to reach our ten percent goal or, you know, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty units picking these off. One, two, three, four, five affordable units at a time. Right, right? So when you have, when you have a standard zoning guideline of. Of a ten units or ten percent of your development, you know, you you have to have a development of a hundred plus units. In order to start making an impact, right? And when you get above that, all of a sudden, your ten percent doesn't make sense anymore, right? It's like, wow, you, there's so many units there. Why do you only have to do ten affordable units?
Right.
So so the idea of the stepped, uh, program is, is that the bigger your development is, the the more. The more affordable units or the more burden you can take on in your development to help the town reach its goals. Right? So the the reason for the stepped, um, the stepped approach is for your smaller developments, there's less burden for your larger developments. Where there's more affordable burden, you have more capital in order to make up for that burden.
Okay, so how do you, and I'll play devil's advocate here, because how do you prevent a developer from subdividing the property? To keep it, to keep it into the small percentages, because we had that come up a year ago where. Somebody wanted in the B one district wanted to take a, uh. The parcels, subdivide it so that he could avoid all this.
Right, so the the answer to that is the minimum lot size in the cha- in the proposed changes is being changed from four thousand to forty thousand square feet.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I I, I think that, um, I I want to clarify my position. I'm not arguing that we should not have stepped. Requirements throughout the town. Uh, I'm just saying that we should avoid it here in the B one core. Uh, because it it ups the risk that we're not going to get our commercial development that we're looking for.
So Walter, you, are you recommending a flat ten percent or a fifteen percent? Because I know we had talked about fifteen percent some time ago.
Yeah, I'm I'm back to the ten percent and just, uh, put as little, little affordable burden on the developer as possible to get the commercial. Development that we want.
And then, and I'll jump in there with, you know, again, uh, people should watch the conversations from the B one conversations, because we've had this one. Um, what what hasn't been brought up in this conversation before is the whole concept of mixed use development, right? That the resident, the residential, the residences support the commercial, which makes the commercial more viable. So in in a world where you need this mixed development, there's, there's affordable, there's market rate, there's residences, there's commercial. It's all one big happy, you know, family that works together for the success of the town. So, um, you know, that that that's part of the mix of all of this conversation.
Well, I I agree if we could get it built that way, it would be a happy mix, but I'm concerned that we can't get it built that way.
I'm just curious for a little bit more history. What was the the deciding factor for this set of levels?
Uh, the last time around, uh, we had a a citizen who who proposed this. Uh, Peter Diamond, who's with us this evening, I believe. At any rate, uh.
Hands up, so I hope you can.
Okay, and and we discussed it and, uh, thought that, uh, maybe that was a good idea. Then we, then I at least had second thoughts. Uh, which I've expressed this evening. Uh, Peter wishes to contribute. He may do so.
Thank you, Walter. Can you hear me?
Yep, I can.
Uh, first, there is another town that does the stepped approach. It's in their zoning bylaws in Medfield. And they have a, a chart here that goes from six to twenty units at fifteen percent. Then from twenty one to forty nine at twenty percent and fifty plus. At twenty five percent. So theirs is a bit more aggressive than what's proposed for Norfolk.
Does that include mixed use?
Uh, anything that requires a special permit, which would include downtown Medfield with.
Is that townwide, Peter?
That's. It appears to be townwide.
Yeah, I I mean, I I think.
You know, the second part that I like to point out is part of Norfolk's housing production plan. And strategy one is to increase the density downtown, which is what the B one committee has been working on for two years. But along with that, and strategy two is to increase the affordable housing downtown. So I don't want, you know, strategy two to be lost in the mix here. I totally agree with Aaron. That our downtown is a great place to have affordable housing. And sure, we have a lot of affordable housing coming, but their ownership. And sure, we have a lot of affordable housing coming, but their ownership. Um, projects, there aren't any affordable apartments downtown and and they, there needs to be some affordable apartments, in my opinion. And then we have Josh's, Josh's buildout. I think over three hundred units, Josh. And at ten percent, that would only give us thirty units downtown average. Where the stepped approach here would increase that. Um, double on some projects.
Yeah, I think.
Go ahead.
Thing about the build out, we talked about too, and I, and to the board, that's a presumption is that there's a sewer pipe out front, so. Um. Just.
I mean, as Aaron pointed out, there's probably only two or three lots. That. Would be eligible for less than ten units. The rest would be all. Ton of more units with your proposed change to sixteen units per acre.
So like I, you know, it's what what's on the screen is. Is really somewhat of blending compromise, if if you want to look at it that way, I suppose. It's just. It still scales up, it still includes the recommendation that Peter brought forward of the rounding, which we don't have right now. Um. In the bylaw, inclusionary bylaw, it's just the base of it is ten, it's not six. It's really.
And and why do you limit it only to the B one? Um, or it, this is, yeah, this is just B one.
So my proposal that I submitted by citizens petition is townwide.
It is, okay.
Gary, we're limiting it to B one because we're talking about changes to the B one zoning.
Yeah, but I'll ask you directly then, don't, don't you see it as beneficial if it went across the town though? Do you see where, how would it be detrimental to just? Limit it to the small area that we're discussing.
Uh, you're asking me, Gary, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, I.
No, I I I agree that this language, I think this language should be pursued by the town and I, and I hope Peter's successful in his his efforts.
Okay.
Well, I do too, except I don't think it should apply to the B one core.
You you wanted just the opposite, Walter. You wanted every place else but B one.
Right.
Okay.
Well, and I'm proposing a slight compromise to that. It's. It still applies to the B B one core. It's still scalable. It's just that the base is ten in the B one, not six.
And and let's speak to that real quick, Rich, because again, it's, it, we're talking about three sites, which is like three affordable units. So it's really silly for us to be spending an hour talking about the difference between six and ten. Right? If if folks are agreeable to ten, then much, really what we're talking about now is whether we stick to Walter's ten percent. The B ones proposed fifteen percent or the recently proposed change to a stepped. Uh, effort, right? That's.
Or as suggested by Chad, if someone were to split a lot, then. You, they may only put eight to nine units and we we miss that whole opportunity.
Well, no, because we've changed, we're we're proposing to change the minimum lot size.
To thirty thousand square feet, not forty thousand.
Yeah, that's right, thirty, right?
Right.
Yep.
With seventy five feet of frontage.
Yep.
So there's a particular lot downtown, which could be split into four lots.
My main concern is that we're not making a data driven decision. I don't feel like we know at which point a developer would be turned off. Um. But to the same point, I'm for the affordable housing aspect and I am for the the stepped approach. Um, I think without understanding at what point from a cost benefit analysis from a developer's pers- perspective. We can make a decision. I think we need to understand what the dollars and cents are from a square foot perspective for mixed use building. Um, and how they're looking to recoup that cost based on. These units and and what they would charge for, you know, occupying those locations.
Well, unfortunately, Chris, what?
Unfortunately, Chris, we don't have any developers with us on the board or uh, unfortunately in the audience either. Uh, so we. We have to do the best we can without that input, unfor- unfortunately.
Well, that topic was addressed by the B one committee. Um, and we did have conversations with developers as well, Chris, and I think you'll find, you'll find, I'm gonna over generalize the conversation here. You'll find, one, there's no simple answer, because every property comes with a different formula, right? Which you'll see in the complications that we're already talking about with these zoning changes. The second answer that that Josh and his team put together was they had a chart of trying to um. It simply put out a graphic that shows the viability of development downtown and which. Zoning change might be the trigger for that site. So if you, if you look at that data and that. Graphic output, you begin to see which sites uh, the affordable housing is the driver, which sites the square footage is the driver. Which sites the height is the driver and it it you begin to get to the, to the data set that you're looking for.
Well, I think we've just, pardon me, discussed this for for quite a bit. I think it's time to decide what we want to do. So uh, I I think, Aaron, you uh, I think it was you a moment ago who. Who said there are really three choices. You could take my position of ten percent across the board. You could take the original position of fifteen percent across the board, or we could take a stepped uh, approach. And uh, why don't we vote on it and see which way we want to go?
And I just asked one other thing. What is the current position of the B one committee? Is it still fifteen percent or is it these new numbers?
The the B, the B one committee has not discussed this as a group, so I don't know that there's a consensus to put before you, Gary.
Okay, so the last time that you did put something forward is that it was the fifteen percent?
Correct, okay.
All right, so um. Chair will entertain a motion to uh, change the language to uh. Ten percent across the board for affordable housing in the B one uh. Core district. Do we have a second? We need a second in order to vote on it.
Need a motion.
Need a motion.
Well, we need a motion, all right. Chair will make the motion. No one will second it.
No one's making it either.
Well, the chair made the motion.
I mean, yeah, nobody said, nobody.
Is allowed to make the motion.
Right.
I don't usually do that, but uh, I will in this case. So no one's willing to second it. All right, well, it's dead then.
I'm I'll make a motion, Walter, to accept the language as proposed by Rich, the the in this evening's agenda.
That's a second motion, all right. Do we have a second for that?
Second.
All right, uh, motion is made and seconded to adopt the language as presented by Rich. For the affordable housing in the B one core. Uh, all those in favor? Let's see, Mr. Searle.
Hi.
Mr. Hunt.
Hi.
Mr. Peck.
Hi.
Chair votes no.
All right.
All right, we've got it. Um.
And then just to recap, just Chad's benefit coming in a little bit, the uh. The document that I sent out, which was highlighted in yellow versus green as far as the voting requirement.
Yeah.
It's been reviewed by with Town Council and um, moderator Jay Talman, that two of them could qualify for a majority vote. The rest will be a two thirds vote. So if you want to bundle them, you can bundle. Two different articles. One would have two, the rest will have the balance of the the B one proposed changes.
Yeah, that seems to make sense. What do you think? What board members, what do you think of that proposal?
Well, I'll I'll jump in because I think everybody already knows what I'm gonna say. Uh, I think this proposal. Has come with much time, effort and energy and it was built as a single proposal. And uh, it's built as a set of guidelines, a single set of guidelines for a single district in town. And there's value in addressing it as such. Um, but uh, that being said, you know, the, the, if we want to take the two items out, uh, I. I'm trying to come up with a way to say it would be detrimental if part of them was approved and part of them wasn't, but I'm not coming up with many, so. Uh, the reality of it might be if the two green items were taken out as a separate item, it. It it might not make a difference anyway, so. I I do, I do think there's value to principle in this.
Kevin raises hand.
I did, and just for the select board's benefit, if you do decide to split the articles into two groups, it would be helpful if you were also able to provide your preferred sequence of the two articles. Um, for the warrant.
Okay, thanks. Gary, how do you feel?
Uh, I'm fine keeping green and yellow separate.
Separate, okay. Chad?
I agree with Aaron. I think that it is, should be bundled. I think they all are intertwined with one another and. I do realize that those, what was it, just two items are. Require a lower vote, but I I think it should be bundled.
Yeah, Chris, what's your opinion?
I think separate's fine.
Okay, all right.
Ed, Ed, Ed's hand is up, so do you have a?
Ed, yeah, Ed.
I I just have a question about, it was raised that Mr. Diamond has another zoning bylaw of uh. A petition uh, coming on the warrant, and I guess the question I'm asking is, how, what is, how would the wording of his warrant, which affects, could it? It sounds like it affects affordable housing. How does that gonna affect what we're talking about tonight? Does one overlay the other?
It would. Right, um, as recommended versus what's petition, there would be a a conflict. Um, as it relates to the B one.
But doesn't the B one zoning? Rule over the town zoning? The B one rules for the B one district. B one zoning rule overrules for the B one district.
It it does, however, the affordable pieces was a new provision within the exclusionary bylaw, include uh, exclusionary bylaw. That we have, so um, I guess. It needs to be. We could talk to Peter about um, what his thoughts are and.
Yeah, it's possible there could be a friendly amendment on the town floor to make the two compatible.
Yeah.
Is that the place you wanna, you want to discuss this on town floor? Just confuse people, confuse people all the more?
Um, well, it it certainly could happen. Uh, well, it could have, oh, so it's submitted.
Well, but I mean, the the real, the real benefit here would be as if the the language being proposed for the B one district is the same as the language being proposed by Mr. Diamond. Right?
Right, that would make it easy, right?
Yeah.
You want everything to be easy, Ed?
Yeah. After two years, yes.
Yeah.
So um. So the, like we talked about, you'll pu- you know, so one of the things on your agenda is setting the public hearing for this, which will be April thirteenth, hopefully. Um. Between now and then, Peter can give his thoughts and you can have further discussion. At the public hearing and maybe there's. Some compromised amendment or whatever, or may go down to town meeting floor. With um. Conflicting requirements.
Right, but we're operating at the assumption that that what Peter's proposing is different than what we just voted on, right? Do we know?
It is, it is because, it is because it starts at six.
Oh, okay.
Everything else, well, you know, six in scale, so.
All right, well, before us, we have the 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 issue of uh, of bundling or unbundling those two uh, articles. And we kind of have a mixed feeling among us, apparently from the discussion that we just went through. But we need to make a decision. So uh, Chair will entertain a motion to uh, bundle all articles into one.
I'm moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor to bundle all of the B one zoning articles together. Um, in one bundle for one vote, uh, which requires a two third vote at town meeting. Uh, those in favor, say aye, Mr. Searle.
Aye.
Mr. Hunt.
Hi.
Mr. Peck.
Hi.
All right, Chair votes aye as well. All right, while we're on B B one, let's talk about the next uh, topic, which is uh. The outreach.
Just, and just a point of clarity. I know we went through this in a previous town meeting, but if someone downstream from us. Voted to separate them and can that still happen again? This time? Can, we're voting to bundle them up and move them forward. If the advisory board or the select board votes to separate them, is is that what it ends up being at the town meeting?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Oh, okay.
Well, wait, well. Based on history, our recommendations go to the uh, the select board for approval and the select board retains the right to. Modify our recommendations, R being the planning board, right? So the the B one zoning makes recommendations to the, to the planning board. The planning board makes recommendations to the board, to the select board and we, and we go from there.
Okay.
Um, I'm a little slow on my comment here, but I I'll I'll put it out there anyway, but I, um, my feeling on the bundling or not bundling is that the. The the two items which would qualify for a lower vote are two that, in my opinion, move the needle the most towards financial viability. And giving those two as much advantage as possible could be a good thing.
Now you tell us.
Yeah.
So I said, I said I was slow, but you know, just.
Yeah, he thought you'd figure that out, but I guess not.
Well, the the benefit here is, is that they're so good and they're so invested in moving the needle, that's, they're gonna carry the two thirds for the rest of the stuff.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, fortunately, the select board heard that comment, Josh, and I'm sure they're going to separate them out when they get there.
There was, there was a lot of work at that legislative level, like get those, those votes down to fifty percent and you guys just.
Yeah.
Just to, you know.
I thought it was an advantage, but. Hopefully others do as well.
All right, well. If if any of the board members wishes to reconsider that and put a new motion, the Chair would entertain it, but uh, other than that, we stand on the vote we just took.
Okay.
All right, we we stand on the vote we just took. All right, uh, Rich, moving on to the, to another adjacent topic, which is the outreach, please.
Sure, so. Very critical piece and even more critical now that you raised the bar for everything, but anyway, uh. Well, uh. I'm gonna share my screen with uh. Um, so just working backwards a little bit, I I sent an email out, the advisory board has invited the planning board and and in turn the B one to their March twenty fourth meeting. For a presentation discussion on the B one um, zoning articles. Um, Josh is, I'll let him chime in a couple of minutes, but um, preparing a slide deck. Um, as it relates to the presentation, that would become part of a video. And we're, we we've proposed two dates next week for whoever wanted to. Uh, participate in the presentation video. And with the, the goal would be um. You know. We thought about is, for example, Walter could have an introductory piece, there'd be a presentation from Josh. Certain committee members or planning board members that want to speak to a particular item. Would be able to work their commentary on um, particular items. Um, as part of the overall presentation, that would be recorded, um, playback on the town website and through YouTube. And then that would in turn be given to the advisory board. In advance of the meeting on the twenty fourth, so they could go over it. And then when the meeting happens on the twenty fourth, it's more of a. Q and A, not necessarily getting into a percent. We'll have the presentation, but it's really geared towards more in-depth discussion if necessary, so. Um, to be, that was one of the recommendations that Susan had mentioned before. That same presentation we would send out to other boards and committees. I know we'd like to get on at some point the select board's agenda, Z B A, Board of Health, et cetera. Um, and that's the overall objective of this, on on this piece of it. And so we're. That's the, that's the, and as far as, as I mentioned before, for town meeting, it's gonna be at the high school, at the football field. We won't have any audio visuals, so will be uh, handouts with slide decks and then oral presentation, you know, that. That type of um, presentation, which we need to kind of work towards as we go forward. That's not nailed down, who would speak and so forth, but. That's on that end and uh. So this presentation, like I said, would be on the website and be pushed out to Facebook and. As a means of communicating it out.
Um, what's, what are the logistics of the uh, of the video production um, next week?
So what, um, so this week, I know Josh could speak to it, but he's gonna work on a script, send it out as lo- as well as a slide. So what, so this week, I know Josh could speak to it, but he's going to work on a script, send it out as, as well as a slide deck. Excuse me, yes, slide deck, because that's new lingo I'm learning, but. And then with the script, we'll put in the pieces where, so for example, as I mentioned, you would have an introductory piece. I'm sure you had some other commentary. I know Aaron obviously had mentioned he wanted to participate. I think, I'm trying to think, I think Ed, Gary, Chad. And so we, you could have, you can look at the slide deck, what you want to speak to, and then weave, weave your commentary in according as we go through the presentation.
So will this all be done via a Zoom call?
It'll be all Zoom, correct.
Okay, alright, yep.
So we'll, we'll have it zoomed up, we can, you know, we can do a dual overtake if necessary, if it doesn't seem like, you know, we need to tweak it.
Yep, yep, yep. We might, it might end up being a couple of sessions, it might be a, a working session to get the thing right and then in a final session, you know?
It could be, yep. So I'm just, for, is the 15th, 18th? I mean, preferably the 15th, gives a little more time, but is there availability?
I am available on the 15th.
Okay. Aaron?
I'm available on the 15th.
And we could do it later, it doesn't have to be, I know if you have, like, so, you know, we could schedule eight o'clock at night if we need to, if that works better time-wise, we don't need to, we don't necessarily need to stick to seven or anything like that, so. I mean, I suppose it could be early in the day, but I'm just thinking for people's time, we can do it later, so, alright, 15th works. Gary?
I'm available.
Okay. Gary Sullivan, I think you had mentioned, right? I think you wanted to participate?
I'm available as well.
Okay. Ed, did you?
I, I did, I said I was willing, I'm just away until the 20th, the 20th, so.
Do you have Zoom access away or no?
Well, I'm on Zoom right now.
And you're away?
I'm away.
Alright, so there you are, you can join us.
So I, so I, so I could do it, yeah, I could do it.
Okay.
Secret's out now, Ed?
I guess so.
Great. I'll do like a lap, you know, I'll send out another, after tomorrow, send out a, whoever is interested. So would, is seven okay on the 15th? You want me to go at eight, 7:30? What, what's the, what's the thought?
Seven's okay with me.
Aaron? I'm good, son.
Yep, okay.
Anytime.
Anytime.
Alright, okay, so we'll go for the 7:00 PM then. Alright, so I think that kind of closes the moment. Yeah. Alright, do you want to?
You want to move on to F5?
Oh, yeah. My wonderful favorite. Alright, so I'm going to screen share with you all. As I mentioned, via my email to you, what you, you just see on the screen, right, F5A?
Yep.
F5C. So I did mention to you, I think there was concerns from the ZBA about creating a little bit additional flexibility, special permit option in the front yard setback. So what you see on the screen is a little bit of a revision compromise where essentially zero foot from the front property line to 20 feet is a no-touch. It, it is a, there is no availability to do any accessory structures there at all. So essentially, that would default as a potentially new minimum setback for accessory structures. The 20 feet comes from the open space bylaw, that's the minimum front yard setback. So there is, there is that setback that we do see within the zoning bylaw today, that is out there. And then, so again, it would just, anything accessory structure-wise would be special permit from 20 feet up to the front plane, essentially the front of the house, that space for accessory buildings. And if there's inclination to go that way, I, I did come back with a swimming pool, it didn't make sense to not have the pool, although I am a little more restricted with the pool. So the pool is not at the 20 feet. It's at, at the 50 feet, but it's 50 feet to the front plane of the house. There seems to be more potential scenarios where accessory building, which again, we talked about carports, sheds, can be garages, so forth, may make sense in the front yard through the special permit. So I did review with the Chair, I did, he, he thought this kind of reached the essence of what the ZBA talked about when I talked to them on the 17th. It's 17th, I didn't have it exact to mention, but I put, I came back with this one based on, you know, looking at our existing bylaw, like I said, that we have minimum 20-foot setback, so.
If I could jump in?
Yeah.
So, Rich, what, what's confusing to me is, is I, I believe the history of this conversation was, is it's worth revisiting because there are some lots in town that have very large front yards.
Yep.
So conceivably, if these, if these lots have very large front yards, there's a very large distance between the front setback and the house. So why are we considering violating the front yard setback for accessory buildings and swimming pools?
Because there are a lot of, a lot of lots in town that don't have a, a large front yard, but they still want to put a structure up in the front yard.
But that's not why this was being considered.
Well, that's one of the reasons it was considered according to ZBA, right, Rich?
The, the base floor origination of this was, so under F5A accessory buildings, it was said, if you see, I just, this setback didn't exist. So basically, as, as you read right here, it's, that's what's existing on the books except for setback. So the, the interpretation and the application of this requirement that the billing department has utilized is, yes, it doesn't say setback, but if you go to the diagram A, which I shared before, last meeting with the plan board, I can pull it up if necessary. It has a diagram which shows required yards, side, rear, and so forth. They viewed the 50-foot setback up to the front plane of the house. You could put accessory building in it. They didn't view, they did not interpret the zoning code as all the way up to the front plane of the house. So when that, when it was a difference of opinion or interpretation of it, the original goal is just put setback. So we know, okay, 50 feet off the street is the front yard setback. When you're from 50 feet up to the front plane of the house, you could put accessory building in and, you know, more or less be on your way. Then as I, we had the discussions with the planning board, and we talked about it, it was like, well, now wait, you know, why are we allowing accessory buildings in the front yard? We went to examples of either our smaller lots, where accessory building in the front yard does make sense from a property site design to allow for it. There's instances, and not have to send somebody through a variance process to do it necessarily. I mean, if we, if we strictly enforce the code and we, we accumulate a significant amount of variances, then we need to be thinking about, now wait, what's going on? Do we need to make an adjustment? So the, this was a vehicle to create some flexibility where there's notice, butters get noticed. There's some site planning that gets involved with where the location accessory building and so forth. And there's a vehicle for people. And I know the planning board didn't want to have it, I think pretty consistently, they were, didn't want it that close to the street, whereas the ZBA thought having it a little closer to the street made some sense on the small lot, yeah. This, this proposal would penalize somebody with a, you know, an eight-acre lot and the house is 300 feet off the street and you want to put the garage 275 feet, you know, so it's in the front. But we weren't, we didn't go down that path to, to address those. This is, I mean, we could, I suppose, it's an option, but and the billing department, all they were looking for is to just put setback and then call it a day and not have to put everybody through a special permit process. So now we're here, we could, I mean, it was, it was a simple, relatively simple at first blush recommendation that morphed. For better or for worse. So.
So with that explanation, Aaron, are you okay with the language?
Sure.
Okay. Rich, do we need a motion to approve this language or have we previously approved it?
No, you do need to approve this, both these languages to
Okay, alright.
to replace what's on the warrant.
Fair enough. Then the Chair will entertain a motion to accept the language as described on the screen for the F5A accessory buildings and F5C swimming pools.
I'm moved.
Alright, do we have a second?
Second.
Alright, all in favor. Mr. Searle?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Peck?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay. Thank you, thank you all for that. Thank you, Rich, for the discussion. Alright. And we have another one here, but I, I don't know whether we should discuss it or not because John raised the issue and unfortunately, he's not with us tonight. That's the existing zoning definition of a warehouse. But Rich, maybe at least we can present the issue and, and maybe not take any, any votes on it tonight, but at least describe it.
Yeah, I could just give a, you know, quick overview. So as you probably saw in the email, so John had written to myself a letter about some of the adjacent communities grappling with large warehouse distribution centers. This one, the article he had sent was in relation to Holliston in particular. It was concerned that we are open or exposed as it relates to large warehouse potential projects. As you know, that was, you know, the, the proposal was 600, 600,000 square foot warehouse on the, the Southwood property. So I, I counted, or I said to Walter and John via email, and I'm showing you on the screen, we're not the same as Holliston and for a few different reasons, and, and one of which is, am I sharing the screen? Can you see the screen?
You are.
Yeah, it's kind of small.
Kind of small?
Well, this is, this is the, what, allowed uses and?
Yeah, so essentially, I just pulled from the excerpts in the C6 zone, which is where the Southwood property is located. You do not see in the allowed uses nor in the special permit uses warehouse. And we talked about this before, it's not allowed there. And as our bylaw is constructed, and it's highlighted here below, if it's any use not specifically enumerated herein shall be deemed prohibited. So as it relates to warehouses in the C6 zone in Town Norfolk, they're not allowed. It's not, it's not a town that has something where there's a, a hole, if you will, from some people's point of view. It's not allowed.
Right, meaning that if, if it were to be allowed, it would require a town meeting vote.
Absolutely. So warehouse is a no starting in Norfolk in the C6 zone. Really significantly important. Secondary to that, let's say hypothetically, it was allowed. Within the C6 zone, 50,000 square feet is the maximum building footprint. Anything above that requires a special permit. So there's an additional safeguard, if you will, but it doesn't, it's not, it's irrelevant because it's not even allowed. And lastly, we do have, maybe it's not the greatest warehouse definition, but we already have a definition for warehouse. So the summation here is that, yes, we are aware of things going on in adjacent communities, but I, I think there are, number one, it's not allowed, so we're not exposed. In any way, it, it, it's just, it's, it's somewhat not applicable in our particular case as it relates to this area of town. If somebody proposes a rezoning, that's a different story, but we're not starting there. It's, it's starting a no.
Yeah.
And so I think, I mean.
The last point, the last point here is the definition, which is a building used primarily for storage of goods and materials excluding retail sales. Really doesn't touch on the latest development, which is fulfillment center, right?
Well, I mean, it's storage of goods and materials, so I mean, I mean, I'm not suggesting that we don't kind of maybe take a peek at, at warehouse as far as maybe updating, but it's not in a crisis status where you need to take action at the Maytown meeting.
Exactly, exactly.
It can be thought out a little bit more and come back to something.
Could we, could we research the definition of warehouse as used by several of the surrounding towns?
Sure, yep, we can. But I think the initial thought from John was that, you know, we're in crisis mode and we need to kind of be, take a jump on this, but as I think, particularly there, what's on the books, not, not the situation in Town Norfolk right now.
Right, 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 got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Probably segue to the Southwood next, I guess, right?
Sure, go ahead.
Sandy, you have a question?
I do, hi. So I see on the C6 zoning that also truck terminal and motor freight stations are prohibited in the bylaws. So we, maybe the planning board wants to entertain adding truck terminal and motor freight station definitions into the bylaws because the kind of e-commerce facility that was proposed could fall under that.
It could be prohibited, but yeah, no, I.
It, it is prohibited, but do we want to add some definitions into the zoning bylaws for these terms? Because only warehouse is defined in the bylaws.
Well, I, I understand the point, but if we do, we won't, we won't be doing it for the Maytown meeting, right?
Correct.
No, it's just something maybe we want to add.
Yeah, I understand, okay. Alright, well, thank you for bringing that up. Someone else have got their hand up?
Hey, yes, hi, this is Peter. I, I was wondering about, I think warehouse is allowed in other of our commercial districts, isn't that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and do those, does that, I'm assuming that's C1? Does that have an upper limit on the square footage as well? Or is there no upper limit? So if someone theoretically buy a large multiple properties in C1 and create an 800,000 square foot warehouse?
Yeah, there's not a, there's not a limit. I'm pretty sure, you know, I, I don't want to be 100%, but I'm fairly confident there is not a limit in the C1.
You got to buy an awful lot of properties to, to do that, though.
Yeah.
True.
You do. I mean, I think that, it's not, in the, in the broader sense, it's not, it's not to say that, you know, we need to, I think we do know that we need, there's probably quite a few different uses, we need to revisit a little bit dated. But the, the point, you know, at least for tonight, was to say that, you know, number one, it's not allowed there. If it were, there is a limitation, we do have a definition, so it's not exposure as some of the adjacent towns are seeing in the town here at the moment. But that was the, really the, the main focus. Peter Diamond, question?
J4A11, which is for the C1 district, says no building footprint other than manufacturing or offices shall exceed 50,000 square feet except by special permit by the zoning board of appeals. So it appears to be 50,000 square feet limit.
Yeah. Thank you, Peter.
Thanks, Peter. Even though I didn't want to. Even though I didn't want to try to memorize it, I'd probably get myself in trouble.
Okay, well, thank you for that, Rich, um.
Segue to Southwood might as well, right?
Yeah, um, just, I'd like to go back once, one step, the, do, do we need to set a public hearing date for, for the zoning changes, do we need it?
Yes, yeah.
Do we need to take a motion to that effect?
I mean, be a little more formal, normally, yeah, yeah, so if you don't mind, uh, and I think. So the question about the timing, I guess, I know that John, you know, has recused himself for the B one, so I don't know if you wanna. Do something earlier and, and. To have the public hearing and then he can join in after or later, that, that's the only question.
Well, let, let's, uh, let's, let's set it early, um, and make the assumption that it's going to be short. Uh, which may not be true, but, uh, we can, we, we can change it before we, uh, publish the agenda, actually, can't we?
No, once we, once we set the time, we're gonna, we're gonna post the hearing.
I'm sure John would be entertained by the discussion anyways.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, but he has to refuse himself.
Did you still listen?
Yeah, uh, well, I think.
He does have to participate in part of it, though, because he will be involved with the discussion on this petition as well as the, uh. F five A and C changes. So.
Uh, I suggest then we, we, uh, order those within the, the discussion first and put the B one behind them. Uh, and I would propose that we do it like at nine o'clock, um, something like that. So we get our other business out of the way, or eight thirty, something like that. Get our other business out of the way before we have a public hearing on, on those articles.
Just, uh, thinking ahead, is everybody pretty confident, schedule wise, thinking you don't have any conflicts at eight? Thirty, you think, on the thirteenth? Release this piece?
No conflicts.
Okay. Alright. And go with that, alright, um. Take care of that agenda, I know.
Now you want to roll into Southwood, uh, information?
So, um, as you probably know, and already heard that, so Southwood did pass papers February twenty sixth. Uh, GFI partners purchased, uh, the property from the archdiocese. Uh, they are, uh, I forward you a copy of the public involvement petition that was submitted to the Department of Environmental Protection. Um, from, from, uh, concerned neighbors. Um, so GFI is aware of that right now, is where there are, is, uh, working to. Get organized as it relates to moving forward with the environmental assessment, uh, process with the property, so. That's, um, that, that's where they stand right now, um, and so that. They, they said that once they're. Or not, they'll. Reach out to the town to talk about potential uses, but at the moment, they're. Got their hands on trying to take, you know, get a better handle on the environmental process first.
Rich, did you mention, uh, the, the, the closing price?
It was, uh, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, so it decreased. Uh, a couple of times, uh, I think originally it was six hundred, it went to three hundred, then it dropped down to two seventy-five.
Okay, thank you.
There are, there are some. Restrictions on all the property could be that are, um. I guess I'd call more religious based restrictions. Um, so I don't, I don't know how that may play or, or not play out down the road, but. Um. Let's see.
Well, the only restriction I know of is the deed restriction that says it has to be a hospital, right?
Um, yeah, so that's the deed restriction for the Commonwealth, but the archdiocese, uh, put on restriction, you can't. Use the property for biomedical research as it relates to embryonic, uh. And stuff, um, can't be a church. Um, it can't, um, be used to provide, uh. Abortion services, some, there's some. Anyway, um, I can, I'll forward the detail, there's some other, I don't know how enforceable all this stuff is, but nonetheless, it's.
Yeah, I think we ought to be aware of that, thank you.
Yeah.
It was, it was probably unrelated, but there was an article in the paper that the state was looking at Norfolk for a female prison. Did, did, is that, I thought it was in the local paper, um, had you run across that or I'll dig it up again?
I think it was this expansion at existing site that they already own.
Is that what it is?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's currently unoccupied, I believe, we're talking about renovating. Right, yeah.
That's what I heard.
So, so it's actually on their property?
Correct.
Yeah, it was, uh, abandoned years ago and they're looking to renovate it to reuse it.
Yeah. Peter, do you have a question on this, or is it?
Southwood and the deed restriction, do you have any guidance for us all about how that deed restriction? Would be lifted, whether by legislation or town meeting?
So I've been advised it's two, two-step process, it's a town meeting vote to then. As a home rule petition to the legislature to have it removed, so.
This is, this is the hospital restriction.
Correct, the hospital.
Is that come from town? I saw your coffin, did that come from town attorney?
Came from our legislative delegation.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Rich, we got two more items to go here, at least, uh, so, uh, three or four, actually, uh. Let's discuss the, uh, hiring a surveyor for, uh, Meeting House Road.
Sure, yeah, I'm gonna. Get back to screen share and just to quickly. Go from the top here. Okay, uh, quickly, uh, these are on the top of the, the page, uh, the roads that are being. Uh, moved to the petition process that become public ways, Meeting House Road. And Liberty Lane was associated with Norfolk Commons Phase One, I'm just gonna skip down to this, um. This slide to better represent it, if you see what I have highlighted here in red. That's Norfolk Commons Phase One, Meeting House Road and Liberty Lane. Um, it was, the bonds were pulled and the, at the planning board several years ago to complete the road. And have it accepted as public ways, um, the initial thought was that, um, we were gonna have to proceed. Through taking process to do that, um, I don't think that's the case now, we've reached out and we believe we can. Have the deed signed over by the property owner, um, to record the deed with the acceptance plan to accept it. Um, we're hiring a surveyor to do an ASBIL plan, that was one of the requests of the planning board that made a couple of meetings ago. Um, we, we have money that was part of the bond forfeiture to pay for a survey to be done. Um, the schedule, my, the surveyors anticipated being able to have it for us in April. I do want to switch back up to the first. Next steps, just to kind of outline things, so it's the intention, the select board would both their intentions next Tuesday night, March thirteenth. Um, refer to the planning board, the planning board, um, this would fill in your space time before the public hearing. Make a recommendation, um, at that point, hopefully I have a better idea if the, the, uh. ASBIL plan is forthcoming, um, you could make a conditional approval, potentially wait until. All the way up into town meeting, um. You know, whether to proceed with it, we would like to proceed with it at town meeting in May. Um, we are going to be paying and to have a surveyor do an ASBIL plan. Um, so it's a little bit different than typical situations, um. And I'll, and the typical one will be when I get to Hampton Road, just update the board, um, now, I'm gonna jump over to Meeting House. Road, which is again highlighted in red here, that was Norfolk Commons Phase Two, if you recall, DPW. Would work to get the road completed, in this particular instance, it's not a cooperative situation with the property owner. Um, we're proceeding through an eminent domain process to acquire the, the fee in the road. We are hiring a surveyor to do an ASBIL plan, that was one of the things that was requested of the planning board. Um, depending upon where we are. It may make the May twenty-one meeting or may have to slide to November of twenty twenty. Um, there is potential damages, quote unquote, um, associated with the taking that the appraiser will be. Working on, on behalf of the town, um, so that, that process is in process, I don't have the answer for it. So that might, might slide, but at least, um, we're continuing along. Um, Hampton Road is wonderfully a very straightforward. Road that was petitioned by the developer Scott Colwell, as you see on the screen, he finished it. Um, we have all the documentation, we have this acceptance plan, we have an ASBIL plan, and this is. A wonderful process, in this case, it's simple, it's clean and neat, I'm very excited about this one, um, and. And then we slide down to. One of your favorite projects you've worked on over the past year and a half or so, um, Frederickson Road. Um. Ron, this is Ron Bobby, he said he wants to get it accepted, but I will say I don't have an ASBIL. I don't have an acceptance plan from him, we do have punch list items, so I'm less confident. We'll make the goal line for the May Town meeting, but we will push through as if we can, if we don't, we'll go to November. But the road is at the, is at the, the end of the process, though, it's, it's ready to be, uh, accepted. Um, update related to this one, DPW does have the, um, tree clearing on the open space scheduled. For. Yeah, boy, I'm trying to remember now, it's, look at my calendar, I think it's March twenty-fourth, maybe? Um, so we did, as you know, it's been, yeah, oh, sorry, March twenty-second. Uh, it's been a tough year with tree clearance, a lot of other things to shift the schedule, but we, looks like we've got a, a window to take care of that. So that's something that's being done, it's paid for. Through the open space fund, and that's kind of where we're at, this is just giving you a little more preview, you'll be back. Before you on the thirteenth of April to make a recommendation, so.
Okay, thank you, Rich. Um, next item would be the master plan.
Oh, uh, okay. Okay, so quickly. So the exciting news is, as I. Put out the announcement, we did receive a forty thousand dollar grant through the Community Compact Program, um, which, um. Is to be utilized towards completion of a master plan, um, they don't provide full funding, but they do provide some funding. We did receive forty thousand, um, we have a two-year window for which to spend the money on the master plan. Um, as we talked about before, we have a tentative approval from CPC for a housing production plan. Which would go to town meeting in May for funding, which would start in, over the summertime. The work of that plan will be incorporated into a future master plan, um.
Who will lead that, who will lead that effort, uh, Rich?
So that'll, that'll probably, that'll be through the Affordable Housing Trust.
Okay, yeah.
I'm sure they'll have some others involved with it, but they'll be the lead on that, um. What I, I have here on the bullet number two is I did see where the town in Medfield. Had hired Citizen Planners Training Collaborative to do a, a workshop on master planning. And talks about best practices, citizen participation, so I thought, we know what, you know, essentially how it went the last time. But I thought maybe the board might be interested in, in maybe having a training session, and at the moment it'd be virtual. To learn more about other master planning efforts in other communities and think about maybe how to, how to move forward with ours, there's. There is statutorily, I'll send it out to the board, there are elements within state law as far as. Their guidance, but sections that need to be in one of the master plan, but towns have evolved some of the elements that they've put into them over the years. So I thought this would be worthwhile, um, effort, you know, to get some other. Some, uh, some training as far as maybe options that the town might want to consider, so if there's interest in that. I did already put a request in, I'm waiting to hear back, so if that's definitely something, we do have money, uh, within the budget to pay for that kind of training. So if the board's interested, which I hope you are.
I, I think, uh, makes sense, but, uh, as I, as I think about it, uh. Not only the board, uh, needs to, uh, perhaps take advantage of that information, but also the group of people, uh. Who are actually gonna do the work on the master plan itself, but last time around, we had a subcommittee that, uh. Worked on it for, oh gosh, eighteen months, two years to pull it together, and, uh, it, it takes a lot of work and. I, I don't believe that the board, it's, or is going to pick up that work on its own, so we're probably gonna need a subcommittee to do it, um. Or some combination of a subcommittee and, uh. A commercial, uh, group supporting the subcommittee.
Yeah, so what I thought I'd do is get more of the logistics specifics on it, and once we had that, we could then put, uh. You know, put a, well, I know that Mr. Nicodemus was involved with the last one, and. And, and there are others, we could put something out there, so it would be, again, it would be. It's open to the public, so it would be, and, and obviously, in this case, because of Zoom, you know, there's really not a. Limitation as far as who want to, to participate, so we could send out a whole, you know, a general invitation.
Okay, yeah, keep going.
Okay, uh, and then last, I guess, but not least, um, so we did have the sewer presentation on February twenty-fifth, so. Aaron, I think, asked, uh, next step, so essentially, um, this kind of lays out the next steps. I know that, uh, Wilbur and Kern has already talked to the hydrogeologist to, um. You know, take a look at the soil maps, look at the existing, uh, information they provided. And then to work on a schedule to do some of the onsite testing in, uh, April. So, um, that's the target date, and the goal is to, as you had asked, to kind of. Work backwards, so to speak, and figure out what the maximum size the system could accommodate for Norfolk Center and then. Work towards whatever that may be, um, so they're gonna, they're working on that right now, um, and then. They did, so just, uh, for the record, they actually had the, um. So the flows that you saw, the build-out flows in the last presentation, that was the flows for one thirty-four Main Street, John probably just. Had forgotten, so they did capture his future build-out. On the site.
Okay.
But. On further consideration, he came back and wanted to increase it to five thousand gallons a day. Just in case, um, you know, he may want to still give. He's still interested in the restaurant, but, you know, with everything going on, not sure how viable that is, but at least being prepared for it. Um, I do need to do some one-off, which I will, will continue to work on, um, with some of the other property owners. Um, so that'll, that'll continue going on, um, right now. So we'll. I'm sure we'll probably have, you know, maybe the end of April-ish, somewhere in there, maybe beginning of May, another. Hopefully sooner, if we can, update on the findings.
Yep.
And then I did ask them to essentially, uh, you know. Sharpen the pencil and see if it all feasible to do a mini expansion, if you will, um. On the existing plant, um. And they're gonna, again, take a little, take, uh, take a look at that as a possibility. And they're gonna, again, take a little, take, uh, take a look at that as a possibility too, as just something for consideration. Um, and so that's where we're at with that.
You know, it, it's, uh, sour grapes, but I think we may have missed an opportunity up there. Uh, we had that, uh, solar field, uh, approved maybe six months ago, whatever it was. And, uh, that might have been an area which had, um, land that was permeable and could have served underneath that solar field as a, as an extension of the, uh, uh, septic field for that plant up there.
I, I will tell you, the good news is, well, it's not really good news, I suppose in one way, but it's very rocky up there, so I I really hammered them on that and they're like, no, it's they already, they already, they already had a mounded system up there because it was rocky and it was soils. So they assured me, you know, you didn't miss an op, I, I thought.
All right, makes me feel a little better.
Yeah, you can feel a little bit better. So that was, that was it for.
All right, um, well, there's only two other items on the agenda of, uh, one is, uh, sort of written in invisible ink, but Aaron wishes to, to say something, I think.
Right.
Uh, yes, um, been talking to Walter and Rich. Uh, I am officially not running for reelection in May. Uh, I, I have been appointed to the Fire Station Committee and can, and plan to continue on Design Review Board, uh, plan to continue with the B one committee and as, uh, we've discussed tonight, the eventual future Southwood and Master Plan Committees. Uh, be interested in those as well. So I don't plan on going too far away, just sort of, uh, a different viewpoint, uh, at this point. And, uh, I believe Chris has pulled papers, uh, for.
He said that earlier before you, uh, arrived, yeah.
We were wondering why he would do such a thing, but now it's all coming clear. But, uh, that, thank you for all that you've done over the years and you long preceded me and, uh, I used to sit and bask in front of you and, and the others when I was first an associate, but I'm sure everybody appreciates all the volunteerism that you've provided to many committees in the years of service that you provided. Thanks again.
Yeah, I, I would echo that. Thanks for your participation here on the, on the planning board and on the B one. And it sounds like you're not going far, as you said, and there's other committees in the future, which will devote your time to helping the town. So thank you in advance for that. Okay, with that said, uh, the only thing I think we have left, Gary, is to approve some, uh, meeting minutes.
Yes, I would make a motion to accept the, uh, planning board meeting minutes for February ninth as amended.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye, uh, Mr. Peck.
Aye.
Mr. Searle.
Aye.
Mr. Hunt.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
And we, we also, I would make a second motion to, uh, accept the planning board meeting minutes from February twenty-fifth as amended.
Real quick, is, uh, it states Thursday, February twenty-fifth. I don't know if that matters or not on those.
Uh, February twenty-fifth is the.
Tuesday on it, I'm sorry, not Thursday.
Oh, okay. So it should be Thursday.
Right. I don't know if that matters or not.
While we are making the statement as amended, uh, Betsy's still on the line, but if you, and as you read them, if they were sent to you, uh, any changes, you can uh, send them to them, but I will make a note of that as well. But we can still accept it at this point with that amended change.
We have a, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a, a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Peck?
Aye.
Mr. Searle.
Aye.
Mr. Hunt.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All right, um, do we have any other business this evening? Uh, all right, hearing none, then the chair will entertain a motion. Oh, one other thing I just mentioned, uh, uh, Josh has been with us all evening and contributed. And I just like to say thank you very much, Josh, for your, your work, uh, preparation for tonight and also on the B one committee and presumably your continuing support as we get closer to, to the finish line here on, uh, town meeting. So thanks. Even though you are slow sometimes.
You, you, you guys, you guys deliberated over, over a lot of things and that one went pretty quick.
All right, uh, okay, chair will entertain a motion to, uh, to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All right, Mr. Peck.
Aye.
Mr. Searle.
Aye.
Mr. Hunt.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you.